Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner's meeting held on August 26, 2024.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye. Next item are the claims and treasure receipts. I believe we had a copy in our package. Entertain a motion if you're so inclined.
Would make a motion to approve the claims and treasure receipts as they are presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye. Next item is the board approving verification of Sherri Newton's appointment as the Lincoln County Treasurer effective September 24, 2024. I believe we have a note to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote. Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item is the board approving verification of Sherri Newton's appointment as the Lincoln County Treasurer effective September 24, 2024. I believe we have a note to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve and sign the verification of Sherri Newton's appointment as Lincoln County Treasurer effective September 24, 2024.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Would point out that we're doing this per Nebraska Revised Statute 23-1603. It gives us the ability to do this.
Any other comments or discussion? Roll call vote.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye. Next item is the appointment of Ben Widener. Let's just get to site first, I guess.
That's the only payroll.
Yeah, I missed it last week.
Next item is the appointment of Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item is the appointment of Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Would point out that we're doing this per Nebraska Revised Statute 23-1603. It gives us the ability to do this.
Any other comments or discussion? Roll call vote.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Thanks, Judy.
Next item is the appointment of Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item is the board approving verification of Sherri Newton's appointment as the Lincoln County Treasurer effective September 24, 2024. I believe we have a note to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve and sign the verification of Sherri Newton's appointment as Lincoln County Treasurer effective September 24, 2024. Second. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Would point out that we're doing this per Nebraska Revised Statute 23-1603. It gives us the ability to do this.
Any other comments or discussion? Roll call vote.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye. Next item are the claims and treasure receipts. I believe we had a copy in our package. Entertain a motion if you're so inclined.
Would make a motion to approve the claims and treasure receipts as they are presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item is the board approving verification of Sherri Newton's appointment as the Lincoln County Treasurer effective September 24, 2024. I believe we have a note to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve and sign the verification of Sherri Newton's appointment as Lincoln County Treasurer effective September 24, 2024. Second. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Would point out that we're doing this per Nebraska Revised Statute 23-1603. It gives us the ability to do this.
Any other comments or discussion? Roll call vote.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item is the board approving verification of Sherri Newton's appointment as the Lincoln County Treasurer effective September 24, 2024. I believe we have a note to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve and sign the verification of Sherri Newton's appointment as Lincoln County Treasurer effective September 24, 2024. Second. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Roll call vote.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item is the board approving verification of Sherri Newton's appointment as the Lincoln County Treasurer effective September 24, 2024.
Second. Would point out that we're doing this per Nebraska Revised Statute 23-1603. It gives us the ability to do this.
Any other comments or discussion? Roll call vote.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye. Next item is the appointment of Ben Widener. Let's just get to site first, I guess.
That's the only payroll.
Yeah, I missed it last week. Missed that last week.
Next item is the appointment of Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next one is the appointment of Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Thanks, Judy.
Next one is the motor vehicle tax exemption application as submitted by the county treasurer for the, I believe we have three of them. I believe we have the Red Cross, Region Two, another Region Two. I believe you gentlemen and lady may have that in front of you. I would entertain a motion on those.
Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption Form 457 from the American National Red Cross here in North Platte for a Ram Promaster 2021 van. Vehicle is used to transport supplies and staff to blood drives for charitable purposes. It has been reviewed and approved by the Lincoln County Treasurer, Alex Garchulo. My motion would be that we also approve the application.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption Form 457 from the American National Red Cross here in North Platte for a Ram Promaster 2021 van. Vehicle is used to transport supplies and staff to blood drives for charitable purposes. It has been reviewed and approved by the Lincoln County Treasurer, Alex Garchulo. My motion would be that we also approve the application.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption Form 457 from the American National Red Cross here in North Platte for a Ram Promaster 2021 van. Vehicle is used to transport supplies and staff to blood drives for charitable purposes. It has been reviewed and approved by the Lincoln County Treasurer, Alex Garchulo. My motion would be that we also approve the application.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate board member.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Ben Widener to the Board of Equilization. Again, following the Open Meetings Act, a copy of which is posted at the entry of the room.
Our first order of business is to approve the minutes held of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner or Board of Equalization meeting August 26, 2024. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve those minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on August 26, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item are the certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor, and I believe we have a couple here today.
Good morning. Julie Stigman, Lincoln County Assessor. Yep, you'll have some corrections in front of you this morning that will be 2003 taxless corrections on seven properties by Mr. Hassan Boo that went to Turk. And actually, before we had our Turk hearings, we were able to sit down. Mr. Boo actually let us in a lot of his rentals, and we were able to make some adjustments to them after we got inside. And so these will be the seven that we did make adjustments to, and he agreed to the corrective evaluations. And then the other seven, we didn't do anything to, but he agreed to, since these seven changes were made, that he did confess to no change on the other seven. So these will be the seven changes that will be done for the 2023 tax list corrections.
Okay. Now, there's one I noticed in here that is listed as just, maybe I thought it was listed with just one name on it. One is.
I think might be in the.
Yen Sun.
Yeah.
And so I'm going to read that one separately than the ones with Mr. Boo and Yen Sun.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, they were all Turk cases, though. Yeah.
Okay, so, Counselor, I'm going to ask a question. I wonder if it's sufficient if I just read the correction, the correction number, and, or if I need to read the amounts. I'm wondering how we actually do this, where this is, where the book itself is actually part of the record. I would think I could read the number, but.
I would think.
Okay, I'm going to try it, okay? Okay, the first one we have is by, and I hope I pronounce these names right.
Happy to meet you.
I believe it's Yen C. Sun and Hassan J. Boo. It's number 6289. The second is by Yen C. Sun and Hassan J. Boo, number 6290. The third correction is Yen C. Sun. This is number 6291. The fourth is Yen C. Sun and Hassan J. Boo, number 6292. The third is Yen C. Sun and Hassan J. Boo, 6293. The next one is Yen C. Sun and Hassan J. Boo, 6294. And I believe the last one is Yen C. Sun and Hassan J. Boo, number 6295. I might mention that most of these are, the correction is for smaller amounts, anywhere from, you know, just a few dollars up to $170 maybe, but they're not large amounts. And I think that was, which came back from Turk. So those are the amounts.
We had gotten additional information on this previously, correct?
Yep.
We had.
We hadn't been in the homes prior to he filed the protest into Turk, and then after he filed to Turk, he did agree to take my appraisers around to the rentals so they could actually get inside and make some adjustments, so.
Which I appreciate, and I'm sure this board appreciates.
Yeah.
I would move that we approve the certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
All right.
I have an application, Form 457 for Region Two, Herman Services, P.O. Box 1208 North Platte. The applicant on this one was the regional administrator, Katie McCarthy. The vehicles in question for exemption are a Ford, model year 2011 cutaway van, and a model year 2017 Honda Odyssey. These, the notation is, these are for transportation of clients to and from day programs and for staff travel programs, meetings, et cetera. It's been reviewed and approved by our treasurer, Alex Garchulo. It would be my motion to also approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item are the certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county treasurer for the, I believe we have three of them. I believe we have the Red Cross, Region Two, another Region Two. I believe you gentlemen and lady may have that in front of you. I would entertain a motion on those.
Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption Form 457 from the American National Red Cross here in North Platte for a Ram Promaster 2021 van. Vehicle is used to transport supplies and staff to blood drives for charitable purposes. It has been reviewed and approved by the Lincoln County Treasurer, Alex Garchulo. My motion would be that we also approve the application.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ruler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next one is the motor vehicle tax exemption application as submitted by the county treasurer for the, I believe we have three of them. I believe we have the Red Cross, Region Two, another Region Two. I believe you gentlemen and lady may have that in front of you. I would entertain a motion on those.
Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption Form 457 from the American National Red Cross here in North Platte for a Ram Promaster 2021 van. Vehicle is used to transport supplies and staff to blood drives for charitable purposes. It has been reviewed and approved by the Lincoln County Treasurer, Alex Garchulo. My motion would be that we also approve the application.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ruler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next one is the motor vehicle tax exemption application as submitted by the county treasurer for the, I believe we have three of them. I believe we have the Red Cross, Region Two, another Region Two. I believe you gentlemen and lady may have that in front of you. I would entertain a motion on those.
Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption Form 457 from the American National Red Cross here in North Platte for a Ram Promaster 2021 van. Vehicle is used to transport supplies and staff to blood drives for charitable purposes. It has been reviewed and approved by the Lincoln County Treasurer, Alex Garchulo. My motion would be that we also approve the application. They provide social service and administrative services to providers within the region who provide services to those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. This has been reviewed and recommended for approval by the county treasurer. Would be my motion that we align with that recommendation and approve this as well.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Brunz.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye. That's all? Is that right, Nicole? Nothing else? Okay.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, Alex. Will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln It's 9:25. Our next agenda item is to discuss, consider authorizing the chairman to sign the contract with Western Engineering Incorporated for a 2024-02 asphalt project. Counselor, do you have a chance to review this?
Aye.
Any... Morning, sir.
Morning. Jason, if you don't mind turning on that mic. Thank you. Do you have the original, or will the chairman postulate this one? Jason?
That should be the original.
Yes, it is?
Yeah.
So it's like we're going to get some asphalt work done, and we were able to get a contract back. You've reviewed it with legal counsel?
Yep.
And anything's unusual? Anything added? Anything deleted?
No, pretty standard contract, and I guess I'll let Tyler speak to any changes.
Our engineer actually prepared it.
Okay.
It's my form contract. Tom has been using that and preparing the final one along with the standards and proposal document for the last couple of years now, so shouldn't be anything surprising in it.
So this project goes from game trail?
Yes.
To Highway 83?
To Highway 83, yep.
And I noticed that your crews have been out there doing some dirt work on the shoulders.
Yep. Yeah, we've been out there working on some of the shoulders, adding to that to allow for their work to follow on, so...
And just as a reminder, this starts on the 9th?
Yep, they're scheduled to start on the 9th.
And ends on the 27th.
Correct.
Okay. Luer pleased with the bid of $1,608,802.50, so I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve and authorize your signature on the signing the contract with Western Engineering, Inc. for the 2024-02 asphalt project.
Second.
Discussion. Questions?
Are they going to have this road? Are they doing one lane at a time?
They'll do it one lane during the day, yeah. So they'll have traffic control out there. Yeah.
Because that's the only east-west arterial road north of the river, so...
They'll leave one lane open with flaggers and probably a pilot car as well through there.
Which is fairly standard.
Yeah.
Just making sure. I've been asked by some people out there.
It will not be closed.
Tell them they can go up around San...
Up to McKearson County.
You know, but San, you'll go through coming right around.
There are other roads.
That's not a true road.
No, but you can get through there and come back down.
Or go back up to Southern and use a new bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Any further discussion?
Boom.
Roll call vote.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
It's 9:30. The next agenda item is to discuss, consider dispatch agreement for the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office. We've had this for some time, and Commissioner Wiems and I, I think, had a chance to review it after our last comments. I know that we also have the sheriff and the chief here. Lieutenant Dan, anything that you want to add on behalf of the sheriff or anything?
I believe so.
Chairman, I would move to approve the agreement for dispatch services for Lincoln County Sheriff's Office with the city of North Platte and the 911 Center. Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just that I know that we had some questions last time this was before us, but the explanation that we got...
Yeah, hopefully, I tried to get into some of the details that the chief had shared as far as the breakdown of some of these expenses. I made a few notes of the Viper system that's essentially more for the county than anyone was a significant part of the cost, the increase in upgrades, technology upgrades, Motorola upgrades, so around $23,000 of that. The state radio system's $32,000, with the emphasis on emergency management and sheriff's office, so I thought the chief did a good job of kind of breaking that down for us and so we could see where some of those costs were coming from. Just a reminder, it is the statute that we have, we shall provide 911 services countywide, not me, so we have a good system in place with the city, so...
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Wiems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye. The man says we have him here. It wasn't closer to 9:30 than 10 o'clock. Cam, right by your right hand. I was thinking to myself, see if they're down about, they must just be filled with... Seems like it was a pain, and has to have another zero. It's 9:35. Next agenda item, discuss, consider procedures, engagement with Regir Carr and Monroe LLP Well, Nicole, did you have this put on?
Did Becky put it on?
I think it actually did.
It's a combination between Becky and...
I think this is...
This is just, this is, I think this is who we are working with on an audit, so...
This is not related to Alex's resigning and a new treasurer coming in and us wanting to have an audit done to that point?
I think what it says, can we make this as part of her, as the regular audit, isn't it?
I don't know why you guys are looking at me. Sorry.
I believe...
Have you spoke to Becky about this at all?
I have not.
Okay, may I see it, please?
This is the...
I believe that was my understanding, is that she could do that audit as part of the regular audit.
That's what Becky had intimated last meeting, so...
When I had talked about you, that's what she...
Correct.
And the email did come to all of us.
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't get the email, but that was my understanding from Becky.
We recommended and agreed upon procedure engagement as compared to a specific audit as particular, for a particular office, i.e. treasurer, due to the amount of additional documentation and receive, and requirements of the full scale audit. I'm not really sure I see anywhere to sign a...
No, I'm trying to get the check on it.
Right, so I think it's just a matter of demodering that it would be in that format, if I'm not mistaken, guys, because there is nowhere to...
So this breaks down that they will do an engagement letter for each individual year rather than one for all three years in the proposal. And we can specify how they do that audit in this year based on the events that have transpired with the county treasurer's office.
Correct, but I, I think it's per the email. I think we would just accept the letter because it can discuss and consider, so...
They speak to the process, is what they're basically saying, is they have a standard process.
Yeah.
And they're recognizing they want to function under that guideline. The question that I have is, they have in this email, which this was sent a while ago, there was an engagement letter.
It was, and there's probably, there's no engagement letter attached. I guess I would be comfortable approving it due to the fact that it came from Becky, and she's conversing with this firm, and this is how they want to proceed as far as their protocol, for the lack of a better description.
So saying the engagement letter that we previously signed, that this would become a part of that, correct?
That would be my conclusion from...
That sounds like a good motion.
From the letter. Chairman, it would be my motion to approve the procedures engagement as prescribed and described with the firm Regir Carr and Monroe LLP CPAs, as has been agreed upon with our county clerk, Rebecca Russell.
Second.
Becky Russell, excuse me.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Wiems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye. So we have a record that we are accepting this as part of that engagement letter, at least it's on record.
Jason, RDO is where we got the water truck, right? RDO?
RDO, um, bag. Yeah. We get a lot of stuff. You know, and we...
$11.94 last month, $10.44 this month.
Is that at the weed office? I think theirs might have been smaller than that.
Road Department.
Oh, I think the weed office was $3.90.
Knock on your door.
Yeah, it's bad right now. Yeah, it's bad right now.
It is 9:45, agenda item number eight, discuss, consider workplace wellness proposal from West Central District Health Department. Anybody here from West Central District Health Department? Interesting.
So, speak to this as best I can, Tammy may have some more information for it. The benefits committee had asked to seek some more information on a potential workplace wellness program as when we were doing our health insurance discussions earlier in the year, with the thought that anything that we could do to get the account, the employees of county in a more healthy lifestyle would ultimately decrease our costs when it came to the health insurance and the claims that we see that create an adverse risk pool for us and impact our rates. So, I know that Tammy's been working over the past few months in collecting information, and one of the organizations that she engaged with was West Central District Health Department, and they were more than happy to throw together some information and potential pricing for us on this. So, Tammy, did you have anything to add to that?
No.
Without having any other program to compare it to, I can't say one way or the other, if this is a...
I do know that the city has gone with a corporate program, and it's a lot more expensive than this one.
See that I was given a note here that we have 196 employees, and the note here is $175 per employee, for a total of $34,300 a year for six months. That would be at $17,150, as, so that we can tell.
And I know, when I talked to Becky, that was kind of in that insurance line item, because she had planned for, with the changes in the insurance, you know, for every employee to switch, and that probably won't happen, but there is some money in there for this wellness program.
Have, is our healthcare provider, I assume, somebody has connected the dots on what kind of savings we can have on the mod, or not? So this isn't necessarily related to the mod, that's more workers' comp? Well, like, what I'm getting at, I've been involved in one of these, and participation level is not all that great. Right. And so you're, you're spending thirty-some thousand dollars, what's the returns, what I'm getting at, is what value does it really bring? I don't know the answer to that, just throwing out. Yeah, and frankly, I don't have the answer to that either. We did ask those questions, they didn't have any concrete data to tie, we did ask them to start working on that. This is just a proposal that's come through, and I think it's probably premature for us to take any action.
So, so before we would decide, though, to your point, Kent, we would probably want to talk to our medical insurers and see, does this have any offset direct cost?
Right.
And balance those two out, and so, okay.
I, I will say, my company also had a wellness program, and I agree with Commissioner Weems, the participation is not what we hoped it would be. You know, if I, if my recall is correct, and it may not be, we lowered the benefit for our seventy-some single policy holders to save about $40,000 for the county. I'm not sure spending $34,000 to replace that, if people aren't going to participate. I, I would like to see, if we do decide to go with this, I would like to see quarterly reports on, you know, how many people are participating. Do we only pay that $175 for the ones that are participating? Or is it a lump sum that we pay with the anticipation that everybody will participate?
My understanding was it was based on per person that participated, but the 34 was 1,000, that's if everyone participated.
If everyone participated, I think that's what the figure indicates, so...
A lot of them are tailored to an incentive.
Yes.
They've got a two-tiered pricing for your coverage, and so if you participate, you get a better deal, essentially, yeah. And that was the request, because we needed, it's the carrot or the stick methodology, and you get greater participation with the carrot, so... But again, I haven't seen any of the other proposals, I think that we need to have a conversation. Rather than be punitive, right, have a positive reinforcement reason to...
Well, we did have our health fairs here, we did have great participation. Because we had, the roads guys all came, sheriff's department, they all did their blood work. I mean, we did find cancer, we found heart attacks waiting to happen, so it was very beneficial.
And that's part of this program, Tammy?
Yes, yes.
And who did we have a program with before?
That was with Great Plains Health, and they don't do that program anymore, I'm understanding.
Great Plains Health, you say? No, but that wasn't necessarily the name of the company, there was a company also, Kenny.
Wellness Works out of McCook, and they do not offer this anymore.
Wellness Partners.
Wellness Partners, thank you.
Yeah, that's right, I was trying to think of one, that's right. Thank you, Kent.
They ran that in conjunction, they were also an insurance firm, so they, it was like a side business to them, essentially.
Could we send out a request to the county offices to see if there's interest amongst the employees for participation? And get that feedback? I mean, I...
I was in the survey, we did do the survey, and it was brought back. I don't have the survey results in front of me, but...
Does it cost?
It was included in the survey.
Is there any cost to the employee, pardon me?
No.
I would be, if it were me, I'd say, yeah, I'd participate, as long as there's no skin in the game, that's just me.
And they did recommend that the employees, you know, have a little skin in the game, even $5, and then they'd be more willing to participate.
So let's table this for future action. The insurance committee, I'm going to ask to continue to work on it, and we'll address this at a later time, if that's okay with the board.
Sounds good to me.
I agree.
Is that it for claims?
Yes.
Was that four?
Just one more. Or so.
So, put this back, did this get to you, or?
Yes.
Nicole, this is the end of the claims?
Ninety-four, number ninety-four.
We, we have about seven minutes before our next agenda. If there's anyone in the audience with children that, oh, there happens to be, that would like to introduce those children, or would like them to be a participant with a discussion as to what this board does, it would certainly be comfortable for this board to entertain a minute or two, if they look like people that are probably interested in civics and government, with their family involved in those areas.
So, yes, so I'm Elizabeth Tagmeyer.
Please, please.
Do you want us to come up?
Sure.
Okay.
Very informal, and it's just going to be for a minute or two, and whatever you and/or your children are comfortable with, just introduce yourselves. I was anxious when we have young people in the audience.
Sure, absolutely. So I'm Elizabeth Tagmeyer, I actually happen to be your State Board of Education representative. So our family's kind of familiar with government and civic involvement. I have Ben with me, he's nine and in fourth grade, and Jenna is seven and in second grade.
Awesome.
And we had, yes, we had some concerns that we had brought to one of our commissioners, and so I just want them to see how things are dealt with on the county level.
Gotcha, all right. So, geography, is that fourth grade?
Um, yeah.
So, is that Nebraska geography, or?
Well, so, so we homeschool through high school.
Oh, yes.
Up to high school, we homeschool, so, so we're actually studying, we started, when the public schools started, we're studying American history, but we will get into some Nebraska history as well, always a fun year to do that, yeah.
Ben, what's your favorite subject that you study?
Um, math.
Good deal, math is important, you'll use it all the time. How about you, Jenna, what's your favorite?
Code.
Oh, it's explode the code, so it's phonics and a reading program.
Oh, nice, nice, I thought she was talking about computer code.
No, not, not yet.
Soon, though.
That'll come.
Yeah.
Soon, my grandchildren are already ahead of me in that art area. Well, it's nice to have you guys in our chambers today, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We look forward to having a discussion that perhaps your mother might be involved with later. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Well, I killed three minutes, but, you know, from this side, that looked exactly like a cigar going in your mouth, because I just got to move it, absolutely like a shroud. Fine, sir. It's almost like a restaurant when they bring the check, isn't it, it's real quiet.
I gave arms.
I don't want it, I don't want it.
I defer to the chair on that one.
By the way, Ben, that's what not to do in a public meeting, okay? It's 10 o'clock, our next agenda item is to discuss, discuss and clarification of the Lincoln County being listed as a sanctuary county. I'm going to apologize to start out with, I had put this on after hearing from Michaela, or Commissioner Ruler, and I told Nicole five minutes, because I thought this was going to be a quick, easy discussion in a very positive way, and then I'm finding out that may not be the case. So this item probably will run a little longer than five minutes. Having said that, I'm going to ask Commissioner Ruler, who made me aware of this, to kind of lead this discussion off a little bit, then we can all participate, including hopefully law enforcement that we have with us, and any other people that would like to, so please, Commissioner Ruler.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Hugley. I was made aware on Tuesday of last week of a link that was circulating in our community called CIS.org. What CIS is, is the Center for Immigration Studies. It is, at first glance at the website, it does look like there's a lot of positive information in there about immigration. They, they clearly take a stand against the current border policy and provide a lot of strong information about the, the effects of what's going on at our southern border. But as you dig into the map and the website, I had some real concerns, and, and I believe my immediate response to the citizen that reached out to me was, I, I didn't know a lot about this, but I did know that this was sanctuary county designation was not something that was determined, talked about, or done in this chamber. That, that's the one thing I was sure of. So looking at the website, there is a place there where you can submit a request for a determination and some feedback. And so, the first thing I did was sent an email to the, to the page, just explaining that I was a Lincoln County Commissioner, that I knew that we had not made a designation locally as being a sanctuary city for immigration. I asked for them to give me feedback and explain the site, the purpose of the site, the organization, and who determined the designation to be official. And I also asked their, them for instruction on how to dispute the designation. And then the more I dug into it, if you click on the hyperlink to the map, on that page, it brings up a list of 21 Nebraska counties that were added to this list. It appears just in June of 2024, the site was updated. And some of the counties were added as late as the end of August of 2024. I called their office Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, left requests for callbacks, and... I called their office Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, left requests for callbacks, and to date, I have not gotten any communication back from the Center for Immigration Studies. I did a lot of research on their website, it does have, at the bottom of the page, that the Center for Immigration Study is an independent, nonpartisan, nonprofit research organization founded in 1985. It's the nation's only think tank devoted exclusively to research and policy analysis of the economic, social, demographic, demographic, fiscal, and other impacts of immigration on the United States. The part that really was a red flag to me was when you click on the map and you go into the detail, it says that they gather their data by tracking sanctuaries, which they define as states and local jurisdictions that have laws, ordinances, policies, or practices that prevent state and/or law enforcement agencies from cooperating fully with ICE in gaining custody of criminal aliens who have been arrested for local crimes. It has not been my experience with local law enforcement here in Lincoln County in North Platte, that they don't take criminal activity from any person in our area seriously. So, I just felt it was important to get this on our agenda and have a public discussion to let our citizens know that this is not a declaration that was made by any elected officials in Lincoln County, any law enforcement agency in Lincoln County. We, we take criminal activity from citizens and non-citizens very seriously. I do feel like it'll be my desire to stay on top of this until I get some kind of feedback and find out how we can protest and have a correction made on this map. I also am going to reach out to the other 20 counties that are listed here and make sure that they're aware.
In, in speaking, looking at that map, it was, it was really, I thought of it was a positive thing the first time I read it, because there are 20 counties right in the heart of Nebraska, small counties, Arthur, Blaine, Logan, McPherson, very, very, very conservative counties. And then there's one county, clurto the east, Douglas County, as an outlier, all by itself. And so this map really, I thought, well, gosh, as conservative as we are out in this neck of the woods, it must be a good thing. So, anyway, I appreciate you bringing that, I'm gonna ask if there's any other discussion amongst the board, and then I would like to hear from our law enforcement, and also anyone else in the audience.
Yes, so, the same concern was raised by the same citizen, I believe, and I immediately reached out to Sheriff Kramer to inquire about whether or not we had any policies with release or anything. And, and I'll let Sheriff Kramer speak for himself, but it was a resounding, what the heck is this? Because it's, it's foreign to our, our policies and practices here in Lincoln County.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Jerome Kramer, Sheriff, Lincoln County. This is all kind of new to me, so I threw some stuff together first thing this morning, and then I see this list of counties that are included in this, and some of these counties have never dealt the illegal immigrant in the history of the counties. So where this comes from, I have no clue. I'm always cautious by, when I see numbers from some organization like this, because the figures don't lie, but liars can figure, and I think that's what we have going on here. We've had 180 holds since the first of the year, five of those have been from immigration. I'm not sure you can commit a crime serious enough in the United States to get deported since the Biden administration took over. Not bad-mouthing anybody, that's just the way it is. And, so we, we hold them on the local charges, they serve the local charges, but immigration is involved, and ICE is involved in the entire process, and when they're done with their charges here and serve their time, they can get them or not get them, I can't tell you how many they've, they've picked up. Now, we back up a few years, under a different administration and different employees at ICE, and we did have a difficulty, difficult time, because they would serve their time here, and we can only hold them 24 hours after they've served their time. That's the law. And we have to have paperwork, and then once we have the paperwork, we can hold them indefinitely till they come get them. But the local employees for ICE wouldn't get us the paper, and we had to release them. It was a crime for us if we didn't, it was false imprisonment. So, that did happen, they got released from time to time, but the people we work with now are great about getting the paperwork we need, matter of fact, we work with them as far as transportation. Their new office over here has kind of become a hub rather than a holding, they don't hold their own, they have us hold them, and, and we deliver to them, they bring them in, and it's just been a real cooperative effort, but where this comes from, I have no clue, because it's absolutely false.
But it's good we have this discussion, so the public can realize it's not something that this county, on behalf of the county, had anything to do with, and it's a, it's sort of some kind of a random research group that has made the designation, so appreciate.
And we would, we would never, ever release somebody that was gonna harm somebody in our community, unless we were forced to, because they wouldn't fall off with their part, I mean, but that hasn't happened.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
You want anyone wishing to make a comment? Please, just identify yourself, please.
Yeah, sure. Elizabeth Tigmeier, resident of Lincoln County. I just want to thank County Commissioner Ruler for her conscientious research. She responded and let me know as she was, as she was getting information, because this is an important issue in our country right now, as, you know, as we see the effects of illegal immigration. And as a mom with two kids, definitely was very concerned, wanted to have them also see that when our concerns are brought to you, that you do deal with them. And so I appreciate the research and the information, I think that it's good to just inform the public. So thank you for the time that all of you and Sheriff Kramer spent looking into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I will just say, I will continue to give feedback if I ever hear back from the Center of Immigration. I, I have them on speed dial now, I will continue to call them, but it is my goal to have a correction made, and when that happens, I will make sure that we review it in this room. But Elizabeth, thank you for reaching out to me, that's what we need in our community. We're all in this together, and we need to take your concerns seriously, and I've had other people reach out to me since, and they were glad that you followed the process and, and we got to the bottom of this. So, we'll, I will give you updates as, as things unfold.
Okay, thank you. So the clarification was made, nothing to apply this board, and we certainly are not a quote sanctuary county.
No.
Alright, next item, it is, discuss, consider settlement from Richard Dirksen for, to resolve the pending NEOC claim, counselor.
Yes, this is mine. As the board may recall, I briefed you on this in closed session last week, and simply back to ask for the board to take formal action and authorize me to respond to that settlement offer.
Be my motion to deny, to not accept the offer of settlement with Richard Dirksen regarding the pending NEOC complaint.
Second. We have a motion in the second discussion.
I think this should stay in the hands of our legal counsel, I guess, to put it simply.
I am required to present all offers of settlement to my clients.
I appreciate it, then, and so noted.
Thank you.
No further discussion, roll call.
Aye.
Witter.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a need, need for a closed session, counselor?
No, we do not.
Yes.
Yes, we do. Oh, yes, that's right. We do, if someone could motion to take us into closed session to discuss deployment of security personnel or devices, that would be fantastic.
I would move that we go into closed session for the purposes of the deployment of security personnel and devices.
Second. Discussion, roll call.
Brens.
Aye.
Witter.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
We'll now go into closed session to discuss deployment and installation of security and personnel. and personnel. Those remaining... Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that at 10:40 we go back into open session.
Second.
The motion is second. Discussion, rule call.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Brenz?
Aye.
Buhler?
Aye.
Wiens?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye. Concerned from Lake County elected officials, department heads, or thank you, Chris, or their representatives. Seeing none.
I do have one. I just have one. I've had the unfortunate experience of running into Mike Montgomery a few times, and he just asked about the HHS guidelines, if we're moving forward with those.
The answer is yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Please. Please.
I brought Captain Newton with me. He's kind of running with that and...
Congratulations.
You mean we lost Lieutenant Dan? Captain.
He got demoted.
Well, kinda. There's been a delay in that program, and I'll, he has the details, so I'll let him explain it. I'm not trying to pass the ball, but I kind of am because he knows more than I do. It's not, not normal, but he does today.
They've had a pretty good changeover at Sutherland School, the administration. Been working with Tyler on the contract, and I think we're ready to go with that. We've got a deputy picked out to be the SRO, and he's completed a week's worth of training in Colorado. He's excited to get going. The understanding that this grant is a cops hiring grant, not an SRO grant, so as soon as we name somebody and get him put in there, we need to come back before the commission and ask for an additional deputy for three years under that cops hiring grant. It pays for wages only, not equipment.
Okay, that deputy will already be on board, though?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So that's where we're at. I'm, I'm pushing for a second semester start. Sutherland has a school, or a office set aside just so we get going, not wait till August of '25. We have to come back and have the commission approve that spot so we can move Deputy Schmidt over and get somebody hired.
Okay. Appreciate the update. I know we talked about that, so... Good. Thank you. Item number 11. Committee reports, do we have any committee reports? Anybody wants to give it this time?
Just that we have West Central District Health Department, the Board of Health is moving forward with our succession planning for our executive director. She is taking a path, which I wish her well on. That's not for a few months. That's not for a few months, and we have a committee that's been put in place to search and interview for a new executive director, so just wanted to brief this board on that.
Good, thank you.
For West Central Health, you said? I, I do have one.
Please.
Update. For the past year, I've been on a steering committee with thriving children, families, and communities. I do it in conjunction with my PN3 assignment from NACO. We are having a conference in Kearney September 16th, 17th, and 18th. Senator Jacobson will be presenting a legislative update, and I will be moderating the governance and policy track and conducting a roundtable. This, this is a great opportunity for anybody in any Nebraska community who is working in with the housing issues that we are having and early childhood development. There will be hundreds and hundreds of people and agencies that work in that industry, and we are there to identify needs and share success stories and try to problem solve and make our communities better and stronger. Registration is still open. I believe registration closes September 9th, so if anybody is interested, reach out to me. I will be glad to share that link and invite everybody to come and participate in this great conference. That's it.
Thank you.
September 16th, 17th, and 18th. 17th and 18th is when all of the meetings happen, so I can share that link with you.
Anyone else? Discuss, consider setting September 23rd, 2024, 11:00 a.m. for public hearing to receive comments on the proposed 2024-2025 fiscal year Lincoln County budget.
Mr. Chairman. Becky, does that work on the calendar?
Yeah, that's the date.
That's the date. Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we set September 23rd, 2024 at 11:00 a.m. for the public hearing to receive comments on the proposed 2024-2025 fiscal year Lincoln County budget.
Second.
Motion and second discussion or questions?
This is our public hearing, correct? It's not the joint public hearing.
Joint public hearing at 6:00 p.m. at the college on September 18th.
No.
Any other questions? The roll call vote, please, Tammy.
Luer.
Aye.
Brans.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Next item is discuss, consider taking action to approve exceeding the budget limit by an additional 1% for the 2024-2025 fiscal year Lincoln County budget. I might say that's something I think that we've done, and I don't know of any year we haven't done it, so.
There has been, there has been one year that we did not do it.
There was two, actually.
This is not our actual budget exceeding, it's our budget authority, correct?
It's protecting your flank essentially.
Exactly.
It's not saying you're going to spend that.
You have to play defense because you don't know what the legislature's going to do to the process.
It's, there is a.
Initially was not in favor this years ago, but changed my mind because I think, I think we've been good stewards, and I don't think we'd have abused it. We've simply protected the flank with inflation, and it's glaringly, everybody's glaring aware of what's, how it's impacted our budget challenge with all the inflationary costs for everything. There's literally nothing going back down.
It's basically that just there is a safety net.
Exactly.
Just because we make a motion in the positive does not mean that we have to use this, and I don't know if we ever have, even when the motion was made, but NACO strongly supports making this motion.
I was just clarifying, it's not our actual budget that we still have to work through.
Correct.
It's our budget authority.
It's the budget authority.
Exactly. I would move to approve exceeding the budget limit by an additional 1% for the 2024-2025 fiscal year for Lincoln County budget with the understanding that it will only be in place to protect us if, in dire straits, if we need to exceed. That's my motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. I think more than discussion is clarification. When I said we've always done it, I don't mean that we've always spent 3.5%. I mean, we've always allowed ourselves the additional 1% if something does happen and we do need to exceed the budget. I think this board's been more than frugal in the past. I'm sure that we're going to probably have to become more frugal in the future. So having said that, it's not our, it has nothing to do with our spending. It's something we still have to act upon, so. Other discussion? Roll call vote, Tammy, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Brans.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye. 2024-2025 Lincoln County Budget Work Session, Departments, Emergency Management, Extension Departments. So, let's take a five-minute break and be back here at 10:55.
Not really, just that they, they claim that they guard their information. I did notice that other Lincoln counties from other states.
Here's what really caused it though. The Lincoln Correctional Center. That's LCC in Lincoln, that's the prison. You have no idea how many times it's been, it's been confused, Lincoln County City.
It happens all the time.
That's exactly.
With lots of other things, but.
That's exactly what happens.
I saw the Link, there's like a Lincoln and a Sodi and a Lincoln, but I, sure would be nice if they'd just return my phone call.
Well, good luck with that.
Yeah.
So it's been roughly a long five minutes. I think we're going to hear from Extension and Emergency Management this morning. Before we do that, is there anyone from Emergency Management or Extension that has to be gone soon, or I'm just asking so that, in order that we take you?
We have to be down in Hitchcock, bike two.
Okay. Well, I've seen how you drive. That's not a problem.
That's another topic.
Emergency Management, you want to look up this?
Page 38.
For those in the audience watching, you might just say who you are, please.
Brandon Myers, Director of Region 51 Emergency Management.
Joanna Lamoyne, Deputy Director for Region 51.
Okay, and a lot of these funds are in and out funds.
What's that?
A lot of these funds are in and out.
Yes.
So clarify that, so we start. So looking budget to budget, it looks like there's a, still a, not really, because if we look at, we've budgeted before, and we look at our actuals and our budget, we're off a long ways, so let's talk about what we do in light of where we're at now, and Brandon, I'm going to ask you to start out with, there are two blanks that I, anything that you, that's out of the unusual this year to start out with. I, I know that, for example, I had a question on our fuels because they run pretty steady. Seems like maybe if we had to act, if we were looking to cut a budget, that's a budget item, only that that's a steady source that we might be able to cut. Rent and utilities hasn't quite been the same, and you notice I looked at a 49, a 47, and then a 2. Something doesn't look right in those.
I can address that. Brandon and I had a lengthy conversation last week on that. Coming from the Building and Grounds Committee, I did touch base with Booker, and the maintenance on the building will be in his budget. It already is, so that can be taken out.
So the $5,000?
The $5,000 can be taken out, and the rent and utilities, there will be no rent anymore since we now have a building dedicated to emergency management, and the utilities will be paid by.
Building and grounds.
Building and grounds like it is for our other buildings.
So the $6,000 can come out too?
$6,000 can come out also.
And I was going to say on the, the building itself, some of what we were looking at was some of the shelving that we were going to have to buy that we didn't have from other places. So that's where some of that money was in.
And what was that figure?
But wasn't that up in supplies though in a different line item?
What's that?
It was in supplies or under a different line item, right?
Um, let's see. I think it was under the building maintenance that we were looking at using that.
And what, what amount was that figure?
The amount we had in the building maintenance was for $5,000.
And that was just for shelving?
Well, shelving and anything else that we needed. So like the ice machine is coming out of that one as well.
I believe there's a separate line item that has the ice machine for the storage building indicated online.
Yeah.
Uh.
I don't know why.
Five, zero, five, zero, zero.
I don't know why it got put on that line item.
It doesn't belong there.
So then, I would have a question about the shelving too, because isn't there shelving already in that building?
In our brand-new building? I haven't been to the brand-new building in a long time. I couldn't, I can't speak to that.
On the what? The shelving? Yeah, we purchased shelving. There wasn't any shelving in there. Yeah, we purchased shelving, there wasn't any shelving in there. I know that with Building and Grounds, I think they're planning on building some extra when they do some other remodel work in there. But we needed shelving for some stuff now, so. And it's not gonna be what Building and Grounds would build anyways, so.
So where does the ice machine actually go? Oh, five hundred, or are you gonna put it back up there in Building Maintenance?
It ended up getting put under the Office Equipment Repair line. So, yeah. Relatively, the, what line item is that again? Building Maintenance, the three dash zero one zero seven. Yeah, we can pretty much get rid of that line, since we already had it, ice machine and another one.
So if you've already purchased some shelving that came out of this budget?
Yes.
Which line item?
The Building Maintenance.
The Building, and how much, how much shelving did you buy? Because I haven't seen any claims come through on that.
Yeah, it had, it came through. Eleven hundred, I think.
Okay.
I'll have to go back and look at our invoice.
So that, that line can be reduced to...
Whatever we spent out of it, the rest can be.
So thirty-nine hundred?
I thought you...
I'm gonna suggest we leave it at thirty-five hundred.
Eleven hundred.
Which it makes it thirty-nine, but...
Eleven hundred.
Are we gonna need more shelving in those?
Eventually, yes.
But there's something at Building and Grounds.
It's something, something I know Building and Grounds, when they do some of their extra work, they're gonna build some shelves. And then periodically, down the road over the years, we may add a couple shelves here and there, but...
Yeah, I mean, that kind of shelving in that building can be made up. We can build that up. Constructionally. At a far less cost, so.
I don't know. I don't know what shelving you have, but I'm not sure that we can build shelving cheaper than we can buy it, to be honest with you.
I just purchased some real heavy-duty shelving for a building at my ranch, and it was pretty affordable and easy to assemble, and very sturdy.
Yes. And that's, ours, the shelving we bought was all metal, heavy, sturdy, so.
If you can buy it on surplus. If you can buy it on, you know, surplus auctions and stuff. You can probably buy it cheaper than, we could spend the time building it out of lumber.
That's what I was thinking, by the time you look at lumber and our labor.
There's some nice shelving in there, I'm saying we can buy it less than what, what's in there now.
So, bottom line is, we know we need some more shelving. Right now, we cut eleven hundred out of that line item. Do we wanna leave it in that line item, or we want it somewhere else? What's the amount? I'm gonna suggest, and it's a suggestion only, that that line item from five thousand, we take it to thirty-five hundred. That's not very much, that leaves another four hundred dollars in there. Is that, is that a fair suggestion? Then we can move on.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
And that four dash zero five zero one, we went utilities from six thousand to zero?
Yes.
And the line above it is thirty-five hundred, is that right?
Well, do you need to go down that line item?
Yeah, thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five, okay, yes.
On Building Maintenance.
That's where we're on our difference.
Yeah, from five thousand down to thirty-five hundred, Jose.
What's your furniture expense for two thousand and one dollar and thirty-six cents? On five dash whole seven hundred?
Did we already, we had pulled out of there anything?
It's just whatever we end up getting. It's just whatever you end up getting.
So why can't we utilize that for some of the shelving costs?
Okay, furniture, two thousand and one dollar and thirty-six cents.
It's that way if we have to replace furniture in our office, or, kind of our thinking too was...
Not out of that building, but at your main office.
Yeah.
And that's, that's an amount that you've had in there since twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two? The vehicle equipment line item, Brandon, I guess we didn't have any conversation about that. Fourteen thousand dollars. Actual last year was seven thousand nine hundred.
What we're looking at is, I do believe... I know that, I don't know why that went up to fourteen. I think we've gotta transpose numbers. The new vehicle equipment, or the vehicle equipment, that's basically what we put. Any of the lights, or any of the markings, things like that, that come out. And I know we had to do some earlier, but I think we got that on last budget.
It was the same last year, we just kept it the same.
No, okay.
That's just what we used.
That's just kind of a standard amount now.
We didn't use, but just a little bit over half last year. So I think it just, one of those, we just kinda left and wasn't really thinking about it.
Are all the vehicles that you currently operate have all of the safety lights and the security tape? Okay. Would you feel comfortable cutting that amount?
Yes, we can cut that one out, cut that one down.
To half that, seven thousand? Okay, thank you.
For which line?
For line, vehicle equipment, five zero three zero three.
To seven?
To seven thousand. Your hazard mitigation plan is blank this year. It looks like in the past, you've had about fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars in it. Was that?
That's because it's not an every-year expense. That one, that's our federal hazard mitigation plan that we do, that's on a five-year plan, that we start every three and a half years.
Okay, and it looks like Hitchcock County's taken that this year?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No.
No, not Hitchcock, Dundee. Dundee County's got one.
Dundee County has theirs going up right now, and they're actually taking the lead, so they'll make the payment, and then we get the reimbursements to them, and...
Okay.
So that'll be on their stuff, on their end of it.
Very good.
Is it...
I'm not, I'm not meaning to kick a dead horse on the furniture. Where you have on five dash zero seven hundred, you have the two thousand and some change. Would it be appropriate to increase that to thirty-five hundred? And then we scratch the Building Maintenance line completely out on the budget? Or are you foreseeing the need to buy a new desk or anything for your actual office up at the Public Safety Building?
No, we don't have anything scheduled this year for, for the office, and big like that, like desk. So, yeah, we could, we definitely move it down.
And then utilize that Furniture Line item for your shelving?
Would we then have to make sure that the items that we did put through Bailing Maintenance end up getting switched over to the Furniture line?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Building Maintenance line down to zero, and then Furniture line five zero seven zero zero to thirty-five hundred. Thanks.
I just think that's more appropriate for... You're anticipating new tires on the Mobile Command Unit this year?
Yes. Those are not cheap.
How about Tower Maintenance?
Tower Maintenance, that...
Twenty-five fifteen.
That is any of the towers that we have equipment on, if something goes wrong. We are the ones that pay for that.
Looks like you've been very fortunate and not have to use much of that.
Yeah. Is that where, no, that's Simon.
Looks like it was only used once in the last four years for five hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Yeah.
But it's probably a good, a good number to have in there, just in case.
So, I suppose I, we have the Tower Utilities line, two dash zero five zero one. We have the Towers Maintenance at two dash two five one five. And then we have Tower Rental and Expense at four dash zero three zero six.
The Tower Rental Expense is Dundee and Hitchcock County.
Okay.
So that is reimbursed by them completely.
Okay.
The Tower Utilities is just the electric for North Tower.
So we have that budgeted at three thousand, but historically, year-over-year, it's only ran four hundred and twenty dollars.
It's one of those, we don't know if and when anything rises. Because this is, you pay that directly to MPPD?
Yes, sir.
So...
Have you had any years where it's been greater than four hundred and twenty dollars?
I don't think so.
Looks like that could be true.
Let's trim that down to half? Heck, even, even a thousand. That still gives a buffer historically.
What line item, Chris?
Two dash zero five zero one.
Not alone with the Tower Maintenance, both of those, I suppose you're correct in needing to have something there in case things go all to heck. But so far, you've been very, very...
That one, the other side that's come out of Tower Maintenance.
No. That's where we do the generator repair stuff.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, we've done the generator repair stuff out of there.
Right now, that line item has twelve thousand five hundred.
And we used almost twenty-five hundred last year.
That one...
Could that go down to like five or seven?
It's, it's, where we do our, on the North Tower, the generator, we keep that under with the NMC. They do all the maintenance on it, and the two yearly checks. And then if anything they find is wrong, that needs to be repaired, that's where we pay out of that. And with that thing getting older and older...
They do have that leak that they're gonna be repairing too, right?
Yeah. So...
How big a gen set is that?
What's that?
How big a gen set is it?
I don't remember.
It just runs as a transmitter and a beacon?
It runs several different radio systems in there. The VTAC, the UTAC channels.
And Enron too, I think, right? Enron?
I'd have to look again if Enron's on that tower or not.
I wouldn't think it'd take a very big gen set, that's what I was driving at, was replacement cost. Rub. Ten thousand. Lincoln, for example, generator welder, those run right now, fifty-five hundred dollars. I don't know, is that a gas gen set, diesel gen?
It's still a decent-sized generator, it's not anything that's small. I mean, it's not as big as ours out here, but, because it's got...
Bigger than ten KW?
Again, I'd have to go up and look again.
Well, to me, it's, for, for future reference, it would be prudent to know, because then you're not guessing at a replacement of hard equipment like that. I get your point. You know, if you gotta replace a generator, but if it's, I can't imagine, I guess that the amp draw is so high, or you'd need a very big gen set in there to function everything, to make everything function.
And it's whatever MPPD's got on it as well. So, it's kinda their backup too. Plus, some of that cost is, is for the fuel for it. We don't have to very often fuel it up, but...
Right. Well, just, it'd be a more defensible point of reference if you knew how big the unit is and what the replacement would be. I have never, never been there, so I don't know what it looks like.
Brandon, under clerical part-time salary, there's fifteen thousand dollars allocated. Is that a new, because there's never been anything? Zero, or one, zero, four, zero, five. Part-time salary clerical.
We were starting to look down the road ahead when we were doing this, at how many different federal declarations we were possibly looking at this year to be involved. Right now, we're part of two federal declarations for the southern counties, looking at another federal declaration for Lincoln County, North Platte, that they're working on. That, dealing with the federal government and all the paper and all the requirements that they put on us to get done in short timeframes, puts a real strain just on one declaration, but we're possibly gonna have three, we're gonna need some help. The other is, starting with some of the newer organizations that are coming in, the beefpacking plant, the rally yard, gonna need to start picking stuff up, a little bit more, a little more hiring.
So you're, that's in there to add a part-time clerk to your organization to help with the added paperwork?
I'm not, I'm not following that. What's it gonna cost, take more time, what are we doing different?
When we, when we get the federal declarations, we, like today, we have to go down to Hitchcock for two different public assistant meetings with FEMA to start all the paperwork, to start applying, to get all that money back that the county spent during disasters. So, and with the third one coming, possibly with Lincoln County, it's a lot more time-consuming. Because it's not just fill this application out, fill that, and then be done. It's years of paperwork until all the, all the requirements are met, all of the infrastructure has been repaired or replaced. And then we have the, the final turn-in sheet, which shows everything was done, what FEMA said, how they wanted it. And they come out and do all their inspections again. As I say, we did one with the South River Road, and that took over four years to get the finalization.
We just closed out the forty-five twenty-one for COVID.
Yeah. So it's, it's years of paperwork and dealing with FEMA and FEMA.
Help me out. Here's, here's where I'm not understanding it, and I'm not saying there's work isn't there, because I don't know. But it's not like you sit down for forty hours a week and just continue doing it over that period of time. That's things that drag out, that they say, you know, because work doesn't get done, so it doesn't get done for another year and a half. You still have to go back and report that stuff then, correct?
We have, we have quarterly reports that we have to turn in every quarter, and not only quarterly...
But in those quarterly reports, sometimes it's probably zero.
Sometimes, but the problem that we run into, that we've seen, is in that quarter, they'll contact, send us an email saying, eh, we need to go out and do this, we need this information, that information. And it becomes time-consuming on all of us, because we have to get hold of roads, we have to get hold of a commissioner, we have to get a hold of clerks, we have to get hold of treasurers, and try and get all that... get ahold of clerks, we have to get all the treasurers and try and get all that compiled and get sent back. So it's not something that even when we think it's zero, we still have to verify that, yeah, that is going to be a zero on that quarterly report or anything special they send out, and they're notorious for that one. And then just to kind of, when they're not doing that kind of work, they can be helping with our credentialing, cause that's very time consuming, keeping three counties with cards, new hires, um, things like that, so.
And we are still hoping to get Lincoln County back in on that other declaration that.
Yeah, that's the third one. Oh, the fourth, that'd be four.
Yes, sir.
And that's work just for Lincoln County, do the other county, do you do that kind of work for the other counties also?
Yes.
And they could cost share with us on the portion that we do for them?
It's possible.
Hey, I can't speak for anybody else, but I know that this year is a tough year and when we look at hiring additional people, that's all, it's not a, it is what it is.
So I'm wanting to circle back to the tower maintenance, because I don't think that we got some disposition on our ass there. The twelve thousand five hundred, that's needed, and historically we haven't spent over twenty-five hundred.
Again, we don't know when and if there's major repairs that are going to be needed on that. I know we've got a leak in it right now that they're trying to track down, see if it's something they can repair the radiator or complete replacement. Complete replacement, they've said a couple thousand dollars easy. So it's not the newest of generators, but we're anticipating some repairs that are going to need to be done on it probably in the next year.
So your regular visits and the two inspections a year, what does that run?
Just a little over two thousand dollars.
So even if you had complete replacement at a couple thousand dollars, we're still about five, right?
It's possible, but again, we don't know what else could go wrong. We don't, and again, with the, the radiator leak, that could just be the, the tip of, well, get in, we gotta do this work, we gotta do that work.
At that point, might be more cost conscientious to just replace it if it's an aging unit. Would you be comfortable with taking that amount down?
We can, yeah.
To, what, what's your comfort zone there? It's at twelve thousand five hundred.
I'd feel comfortable for this year, dropping it down to seven, seventy-five maybe.
I was thinking seventy-five.
Seventy-five would be a good compromise. Thank you.
Brandon, I know we're scrutinizing your budget, I don't want you to take that as though we don't appreciate the work that you do, but I do have some more questions. Telephone services, you have a note in here seventeen four to twenty thousand four hundred. Can you explain that for me? It's a line item two dash zero two hundred.
Um, I know that we had increases, um, just in, the services themselves have increased, plus we added Starlink, so that's another, um, I think two hundred and fifty a month for service on that. But that includes cable, some of the internet stuff that we have, so it's not just all just phone service, it's just kind of where it all falls.
So it'd been running thirteen or fourteen thousand a year other than this year, correct?
Yeah.
And you anticipate it going up to?
With inflation of things, yeah. And then just to replace some stuff, um, if we have to replace any cell phones, anything like that, those are not getting cheaper again, so.
And, and the addition of Starlink, which is a satellite?
Yes.
Internet service?
Benji?
And then below that you have, oh, other telephone service, seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven, but I don't think that's.
That's alert sense?
That's our mass notification for Dundee and Hitchcock, so it's not even, not even coming out of us.
Okay.
It's just one of those.
Okay, they pay for that.
We pay it, they pay us back on it.
Thank you. Money in, money out.
Yeah.
Yes.
Was Starlink new this year or did you have that last year?
What's that?
Was Starlink new this year or did you have that last year? Because I see a twenty thousand line item last year.
We purchased that last year, so the increase is the, the monthly payments on it.
Okay. So you still had, you still ran about fourteen thousand last year, right?
Roughly, yeah. But like I said, between that, um, some prices on internet and things like that going up, we've already seen increase in bills. And part of that, we budget that if we have to replace any cell phones.
Which I understand, I just, I mean, approximately eighty-five hundred dollar buffer in there from what you spent last year, so. Where you have buffer and a lot of these other line items, I'm wondering if we need that, that kind of buffer. I'll come back to that. I see an increase in dues and registrations and subscriptions. Are you joining any new organizations or what's going on there?
No, the, the dues are increasing for some of what we are involved in.
So I see, I mean, we see that the increase from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four. This is line item two dash eighteen oh one for everybody's reference.
That is also where, for like the IAM conference, so that's a registration. Then it's also, I believe part of that amount is coming out of Dundee's for the deputy director down there.
Yeah, but you've gone to the IAM conference for a couple of years now, haven't you?
Yeah. Cause there's, there's one up, um, our local NAM organization went up.
South Central Pet went up.
The South Central Pet region that we belong to has gone up as well.
I'm just, you still had a twenty-five hundred dollar buffer from what you spent last year to what you had budgeted last year, I'm just.
Well, adding in the, the deputy director down in Dundee to go to IAM, that's seven hundred dollars roughly. Yeah, about seven hundred dollars just for registration, plus another hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars to be part of the IAM.
So the deputy director down there is new?
Yeah.
And they're reimbursing?
That's part of, that's part of what's coming out of from down there, is paying for that as well.
So they're reimbursing for that increase?
Yes.
That's, just had questions, trying to understand.
No, and it, it does, even for us, get confusing at times unless we're looking at all three counties. So when we just look at the one.
Safety clothes, three dash zero one two three.
Yes.
That line item has increased year over year. Kept it the same this year, but you haven't come close to spending what you have budgeted there.
And that, it covers not just safety clothing stuff, it covers new uniform shirts that we periodically replace.
For how many people?
New T-shirts that have our logos on them.
For how many people?
Um, for six, well, the T-shirts, we give those to the volunteers, and there's about four of those. Plus the, so that's eight T, eight people for T-shirts roughly that we'll redo every year.
Okay.
Sometimes change the logo a little bit. The uniform shirts, that's only four of us, myself, Joanna, and then Kyle and Pam, the, the two deputy directors down in Hitchcock and County, Dundee County. It also covers, and what we're kind of looking at, the reason it's a little bit more and probably going to use a lot more of it this year, when it comes to our high-vis clothing, a lot of people don't realize, but high-vis by the Department of Transportation, and even on the high-vis, it shows, you can only wash this item X amount of times. If it's worn and starts showing deterioration, it has to be replaced. So we're, like our high-vis jackets, we've had those for several years, we're looking at having to replace those.
Brandon, are things like that covered under grants?
Sometimes, but not really, and not really, um, law enforcement can find those grants and get those when it comes to emergency management, not as much.
Okay.
And we're, we're talking about clothing for twelve people roughly?
Jackets, high-vis jackets for the cold weather, those are about three, four hundred dollars. And we've had those five years more, five years or more? So they're, they're an item that we keep around for a long time. High-vis vests, depending on what vest you're getting, um, you know, we can get the really cheap ones that fall apart pretty quick. I prefer the longstanding expensive ones that we're going to keep around for several years, which we've had, so, but they're getting to the point of, some of them are getting to the point that they have to be replaced.
Yeah, but you're not, I mean. We're getting, again, as Commissioner Hughley said, we got, we got a lot of pressures this, this budget cycle. And we've got to needle out the, the needs and the wants a little bit, so.
When it comes to high-vis clothing, it's not a want, it's a hassle. We are out there, when it comes to truck parking in the winter, I will not put my people out there without high-vis clothing.
Right, and I'm not.
And some of it, some of it is electronic stuff.
Right, and I'm not saying that we're not going to send you out there with high-vis clothing.
No.
I totally understand the importance of having high-vis clothing.
And then when it comes to.
When's the last time that you priced with a different vendor for high-vis clothing?
We routinely look at different vendors, and we go with the, the products again that we know are going to be good, high quality. I'm not going to buy something cheap for any of my people. That's one standard I will not negotiate on because, again, when it comes to a high-vis, I don't play around with the safety.
Looking at that, in twenty-one, twenty-two, you did spend four thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars. Every year since then has been below three thousand. There's six thousand in this year's budget.
I'd say some of the increase in the, that one year was some electronic high-vis stuff that we bought, which is called Guardian Angel. It's a light setup that attaches to your shoulder by magnets, so it can go under your shirt, go under your lapel of a jacket. State Patrol is, is using those, um, they're actually mandated when they're in traffic that they have to wear those. They're very high visible light that blinks, catches everybody's attention, um, so we've gotten several of those. Including that through grants, we purchase them for our CERT teams.
So it can't be done through grant?
Well, I think that was actually done through the Pet Region.
Yeah.
Those were done through the Pet Region, through, through CERT, through the grant, through the Pet Region.
Not to divert from that, but in that same supplies and materials, emergency stockpile supplies and equipment, last couple of years has been very small amount, and your notation over here is for PPE, for infectious disease stockpile. Do we, do we need that yet, or do we have enough?
I don't want it. But following trends, listening to you, um, what we hear from not only state emergency management, but federal emergency management, and they still kind of want everybody to kind of keep on hand PPE that we can supply to the county.
Do you have much in storage?
We've got some that, um, let's see, some of the, the paper masks are going to have to be gotten rid of and replaced, um, some of the chemicals, cleaning chemicals are going to have to be rotated out.
They do have a life expectancy, the stuff that we used at my employer, you can't keep them around forever, so is stockpiling really? I mean, I understand if there's something, it's hard to get supplies, we just, we just live that, right?
Yeah, that's, pretty much that's why it's there, but I, it's not one that I want. I mean, I can, we can lower it definitely.
You got seven thousand, can we lower that sum?
Yeah.
It's still be in good shape, uh, what would you feel comfortable with?
I'd say probably we could lower it to twenty-five hundred. I'm real comfortable with that one.
Okay.
But it's just one of those, again, and this is that lesson learned from COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Everybody will be looking for it at the same time.
Brandon, I just noticed a note from our conversation that we had last week that I didn't address yet, on the fuel and oil line, my note indicates, uh, with a question mark, so I'm not sure, I don't recall if we talked about this, but it says cut four thousand seven hundred out, leaving seven thousand dollars in that line item.
Yeah.
Did we have that conversation?
Yeah.
And that, that was agreeable for you?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just, again, it's one of those.
What you was asking about?
Fuel and oil.
Oh, thirty, uh, three dash zero two zero nine.
Yeah, so it's got eleven thousand seven hundred, we're going to cut it to seven thousand, which trims four thousand seven hundred out of there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it's one of those, yeah, we kind of estimate it high because again, we don't know what fuel prices are going to be doing again.
Right.
And that diesel bus, when we fill that thing, is a hog, so.
Or wouldn't we have to go somewhere?
Yeah.
But that, that still leaves us at, at levels that we haven't used.
I'm comfortable with that.
Previously, okay. Thank you.
About twenty-four thousand.
For me, I am done picking through your, through your budget, sorry.
My rough math is about twenty-four thousand. Rough math, real rough.
And you still have buffer?
You've got some buffers.
Yeah.
Which I like the buffer, we, we use a little bit of a buffer because, again, we don't know what disasters are coming.
I don't know.
Brandon, that's, that's the great, a tragic disaster, something is, it's something we definitely planned for, we hope that we never have to use it, but if there's a financial obligation that comes up because of something like that, um, one-off type situation, that is why we have the inheritance act.
Yeah.
So.
A lot of it is, um, cause if we, if we have to come, you guys get that money, they can take time, or a lot of it is, we're just credit card out, buying and spending real quick, keeping track of everything to, the big goal is to, it's that it's big enough that we get either the government, governor's disaster fund money back, or it's up to, to the federal and getting more money back, so, but yeah, it's.
The good thing is, is a lot of the things that we've just trimmed haven't been in one of those line items where it's like emergent, you have to, you can't wait a few days to come forward, so.
And some of the money too, again, um, what you guys will see is, we pay for something, but it's coming back in a grant or other ways, so.
And we try to stay away from that bottom line under our capital outlays and grants, so specifically.
That bottom line is very. That bottom line is very, yeah, it doesn't really represent our budget. It's a lot of that grant money that comes in and out.
In and out, yeah.
You're the holding tank and it goes out to other organizations.
And then, of course, the reimbursements we've gotten and stuff like that.
We do get all the reimbursements back from the two counties every quarter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what else?
Um, we had the CAT, the, the COVID stuff, we got our final thing in along with the CAT Z, which is the administrative, so we got a total of like 17,000 to 15,24 last year back for the COVID stuff, and that was, has been finally closed for Lincoln County. Um, we received a reimbursement from Southwest PET and, uh, after the fiscal year, we've got a reimbursement from South Central PET. Um, we have the EMPG, which is going to be less this year. Um, and we had EMPG ARPA yet, so we had a little bit from that, and then, um, we got some reimbursement from the Betty's Way fire as well.
So the EMPG is the Emergency Management Program Grant, and that's a federal grant that, um, filters from the state to us. It's, used to be, it paid for a lot of stuff. Um, it's filtered down to pays for half, if not just under half, of the director's salary benefits. So it is, it's still money that we're, we're getting back, plus, um, the city pays for our services as well, so. We do get some money back. We're not just a, a bleeding hole.
Well, with that said, I sleep a lot better at night knowing that you and Joanna are out there willing to respond to stuff. You guys had a very busy year last year. I wish you a much calmer, quieter year this year.
Be nice.
Yes, it would be nice.
Brandon, leave while you're ahead.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, I'll give that to him.
Page 20. Extension. Grab another soft chair and grab over there too, if you want to. Doesn't look very soft. Now, that last one was an easy budget. When we come to state agencies, we really delve into state agencies, so that's all I got to say.
Yeah, be worried there for a little bit.
Just for the introductions, would you please, uh, state your name and who you're with, please, kind of what you do? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Chuck Burr. The former lead educator. Ben Dutton is replacing me in that role. Ben is our new Rural Prosperity Nebraska educator, based here in Lincoln County. And we also have Sarah Weisman, who's our extension board president with us today.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Ben, your last name was Dutton?
Dutton, D-U-T-T-O-N, yeah.
Very good. Welcome.
Thank you.
Sarah, nice to see you. You too, Chuck. Didn't want to leave you out.
Is Chris up?
Yes.
Guess he wasn't done with that discussion. It looks like most of your increase is, uh, in the personal services.
Oh, there is.
Yeah, we're finally fully staffed. It's been several years since we've been fully staffed, so that's why the increase there. The only thing I was thinking about is the holiday pay. Um, so if we pay somebody holiday pay, they wouldn't get normal pay, is that right? Because for the extension assistant and then clerical, um, I figured, you know, full 52 weeks, 40 or 35 hours per week.
I mean, you'd have your pleasure holidays, that would be holiday pay, like 12 or 13 a year, whatever it is now.
So we could probably cut a little bit out of clerical and extension assistant, since they'd be getting holiday pay for, what, 11 days out of the year?
So, so here was my question when it came to, for example, the extension assistant. Last year we paid 36,5. We budgeted 41,7. There was a 50 cent performance raise, which is $1,000 roughly, so that would have made it 37. So I understand we budget a little higher last, I mean, our, I, I see that we're back up to full staff. 22, 23 we weren't, but 23, 24 we were, 24, 25 we will be. But is, is that a little bit high even on that line item?
So for both the, well, the part-time clerical salary and extension assistant, I figured two and a half percent increase starting October 1.
How much?
Two and a half percent.
Okay.
Plus the 50 percent, or the 50 cent performance raise?
Previous, yeah.
And the dollar raise? So we have COLA in there as well. That was where my question was.
But I, that adds up to a $5,000 increase for the, yeah, something.
Well, at least one of the employees takes, uh, does it take insurance? So they get, uh, the $400 a month, I think? Five, okay, $500 a month. I don't think I included that in the budget.
So last, but I'm looking, your, your very top line.
Okay.
Salary extension assistant. Last year's actual was 36,589 and 57 cents, but you have budgeted 41,765.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Part of that could be reduced because 11 or 12 days, they would get holiday pay instead.
And that comes out of that 4,860. Thank you.
Yeah.
What, what are you, what can we reduce that to?
Okay, but you just said you didn't include cash and lieu?
I did not.
Okay, so that's a plus 6,000. You didn't include that in the, in the pay.
So that needs to stay and potentially increase?
They don't have cash and lieu, if that's 500 a month, five, 10, 12, 6.
So what was our total expenses for personnel last year?
112, 658, 68.
Yeah, and we budgeted 113, 84, 840.
Right.
We had an open position for four or five weeks. So we were way under budgeted for last year for what we had.
You had, you had an unfilled position for how long?
It was four or five weeks. Our new employee started, but she started after the June pay, so she didn't actually get any pay till the July paycheck.
So on your budgeted expenses last year, was the cash and lieu figured into those?
See, Randy, what it does.
Should have been. That's, that just seems the, the increase just doesn't, it seems high.
I went through and figured what the current salaries were for 13 weeks, and then two and a half percent increase for 39 weeks.
And so you were up to full staff last year, and, and that budgeted total expense was 113,840. With COLA and two different performance raises, it looks like, we're up to 130,185.
Yeah, I think we were way under budgeted last year for personnel, because we spent almost 113,000, and we had that open position for several weeks.
Well, actually, you spent, you spent 112 and you budgeted 113.
You were only $1,000 under budget.
Right, but we had an open position for four or five weeks that didn't, I mean, there would have been.
Which position was that? Because I'm trying to reflect that in the pay. Was that, um, the clerical salary? Was that one of those that was open? So rather than 68 that was budgeted and we paid 62, that $6,000 or $5,000 is the 13 weeks or 16 weeks we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in, in reality, that might have been 68, would have brought that up to, you know, 118 or something, maybe. I don't know. It's two of the numbers. Okay. Well, it's starting to look a little better number-wise anyway at least, so. So that total of 130,185, if you take into account what you were talking about on holiday pay, what are you thinking that that drop should be?
We could probably cut 4,000 maybe out of there, so a total of 126, 185.
185, Chuck.
I'm not understanding how we can cut anything out.
Because he figured holiday pay in up here, and then there's also a line item for.
He didn't figure $6,000 there either.
Cash and lieu.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, so that, that amount stays the same.
No. He needs to be $6,000 more because he didn't figure cash and lieu up there. So if we add 45 and 4, uh, maybe, maybe we're saving 2,000 bucks as well. If I'm not mistaken, but ladies in the clerk's office, would you address that, please?
I can't remember what Randy, I mean, you did have that open position, but by the time you do, you're off the wording. But you would have had 4,800 in there from last year in your line items, because of the MIP system payroll goes out as a total. So the cash and lieu would be included in that payroll line item, so, I mean, you've got to add 1,200 at least for the increase in cash and lieu. So two and a half, and then whatever, however, which you had for your, that you were vacant, which you don't figure, what was 6,800?
Yeah, so what was submitted last year would have been about 5,000 more, because Randy cut 5,000 out of the budget. I believe he took most of that out of personnel.
Yeah, he did.
So we were probably under budget 5,000 last year because of the cut.
So where I said we were probably about 118 then instead of 112, 8. So in reality, we're probably 12,000 dollars more.
So that, that bottom line needs to stay the same then? Is that what we're saying? There is no trim out of.
Travel.
Question.
This is item 21704. We budgeted 42. We spent 28. We're budgeting 52, which is another 1,000 when we underspent by like 2,000.
Yeah, so remember several months ago, I came and asked it for $18,000 from the board? Because I thought we were going to be way over budget. After we got rid of an employee for not being able to calculate, we found two mistakes that put $18,000 back in the budget, so we paid out of our own operating accounts. My, my revolving fund and everybody's revolving fund, instead of charging mileage to the county, that's why it was so much lower this past year. There's no wiggle room in there anymore either. Plus, we have a new employee in the office.
But you're not going to travel though. You'll, you'll stay at the office.
Right here.
I don't, I guess I don't know where else to cut. I mean, if you look at the copier maintenance agreement, we got a new copiers. We cut, what, $1,800 out of that line item. The equipment, we went up a little bit on, but it's expensive. We have two computers replaced every year now.
That's a pretty minimal increase there.
Yeah, yeah. I guess I don't know where else to cut.
Maybe there is nowhere else to cut.
The building repair, you got 600 in there. Last year you used $10.73. That was a, that was a great year for building repairs. Oh, yeah, but you did have one big year in there, so that might not be an unreasonable amount either.
Well, if they would have used nails rather than screws, they could have cut that down to eight bucks. So, so personal services total, what did we finally determine there? That it's going to need to stay at the 130 or is it 126?
I think we could probably give you a little wiggle room and cut five from your clerical salary, from 75,060 down to 70,060. I don't know, I figure that still gives you about two or $3,000 wiggle room, at least, probably.
So line item 10305 is going to be what?
70,060. And if, if he, like you said, did the, the holiday pay, that kind of balances that out.
Yeah, that's about the difference.
So that takes your, yeah, the 70, 75,000 down to 70?
Oh, 15.
Yes. So that changes the 130, 185 down to what, Becky?
125.
125, 185.
125, what?
185.
185.
I miss something because.
You got smoke coming out of your.
I think I need new glasses. Having trouble seeing in the pages.
If, if the 15 and the 60 don't match. That was 060 in this.
I think she left it the same, 060.
Yeah, I just took 5,000.
Yeah, she just took 5,000 even.
Thank you.
Round numbers.
On cars, Chuck, you guys, uh, that's just for maintenance and repairs.
Two state vehicles that the university lets us use, but yeah, we had to put a windshield in one of them and tires and.
And it looks like you've used about that amount every year.
Yeah.
A lot of windshield and tires.
Not much wiggle room on your new equipment either from previous years.
Well, you're going to hate to hear this, but it's 12 o'clock. We're probably going to have to stop.
Guess that's over.
You're done with us?
Yeah.
I'm kidding, any, any other places for these guys, there's not much, not many other places to cut guys.
Yeah, it's a pretty short budget.
I serve as a leader and I see them wrestling over the budget, the expenses and everything.
We typically turn money back every year.
So.
Which is typical for almost every department we have.
Yep.
Okay.
We appreciate how conservative. You guys have sharp pencils.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know, I don't need particulars, but is there any line items in the IT department budget that we need to raise or lower?
Which?
Is that staying the same? I just, I wanted, I'm just going to make sure we touch that, because they, the other ones we're going to do for today.
I think. Probably not out of theirs.
Okay. Just want to make sure there's.
Okay, is that on 38? Let me look back. That's been a lot of conversations ago.
There were several line items. The first one is, um, zero, two, it's 30209.
Oh, you're, you're looking at emergency management. We were looking at.
IT.
IT.
Oh, I'm sorry.
610. From your session.
From the closed session.
But I, I know. 610.
IT was eight.
Eight.
That was close.
I mean, it is so conservative, but I just need to know for, for season, if there's anything we need to do with that. I don't need particulars. I just need to know if there's any line items that need to go up or down.
No, we didn't.
Nope, stays the same.
Same, okay. Thank you. Just want to make sure we didn't miss that.
Can we go to page one?
Page one.
Uh, five dash zero 500.
Okay.
Like to strip that 9,000 down to 1,000.
1,000, sorry?
Yes.
Yeah, because we weren't up to, we agreed we weren't doing that, so.
Well, no updates to streaming, so we're going to leave it.
So that's a 8,000 cut there.
What number was that?
That's five dash zero 500.
Okay, thank you.
Bringing that down to 1,000.
Thank you.
That makes it 291.
000.
000. Point 00.
Am I adding the next 20?
Hey, Becky, I had a question. How's the text mic go working out?
I'll be honest, since I haven't really been here since May, I mean, I think some of it's working out fine. I don't know how the treasurer's office is using it, because Alex had really. I don't know how the treasures office is using it because Alex had really utilized that, so I don't know. But I really still think it's a tool that'll be great. I know Tammy's used it, emergency management's used it, but I didn't unfortunately get to use it as much for election as I.
If we're signed up for it, we would get a text from every department that sends a text out?
If it's to that list.
Because I haven't had many texts from TextMyGov recently.
This note from district court, we got it?
Now, the treasures office, you would not see the traffic because she has, she's utilizing the chat part of it. I don't, like I said, you'd have to talk to Alex or Sherry to see how much that's been utilized. I guess, I don't know about roads, emergency management. I mean, you wouldn't see, you would only see the mass stuff that goes out to the public. You would not see the inter.
Yeah, suppose in.
I don't know, we'd have to probably address that if it was on there. But I, I have not utilized it like I planned to this year just because of circumstances.
And I'd like to drill down and see how many people from the publics are actually like utilizing that tool to find out information and guide them to the different resources as well.
I can contact TextMyGov.
Okay. We've had it for a little bit, I just want to know what the ROI is.
I mean, we got, we got a lot of people that signed up for it, they were dreams.
And we, I believe we're giving it to all the new employees to sign up, that's what we're using for emergency managers and emergency, whatever. And I know around the election, I'll help utilize that more as well.
Yeah, I just, in May, we just didn't. I know, I mean, I don't know how Jason is on yours, we'll have to, I mean, do, because they were supposed to be able to report incidents and things all on that, I don't know.
What is this?
Yeah, we have another head, anything that you've used it for?
It'll probably be more applicable during winter weather conditions for the road department.
And I think we need to do, probably do, I mean, once we really got up and running, we need to do a public.
I agree.
First again, as far as marketing it.
What's this?
Uh, I did increase that, 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 that supplied that to me last week, so I did put that in the changes for Susan.
You tapped this record?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And that changes have been put on our budget sheet?
This was in the new incentive report that Susan sent over.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you want Susan to come up next to kind of explain. I, I had emailed her over the weekend to kind of explain, even though we took money out, why did it affect the lid and.
I think that would be good for me.
With the chairman.
Morning, Susan.
Good morning.
Susan Levine, Chesney Martin-Saghorn regarding the budget. Last, last week you had cut quite a bit out of the, you know, some out of the road budget to take out of another fund. And what, what happened was the reason it didn't affect the lid particularly is because you did reduce your tax request, which reduced restricted funds. But by reducing the road fund, you were reducing the transfer into the roads fund from the general fund. That's how the road fund gets its restricted funds, is from the general fund. So when that's reduced, then the amount you can exclude from restricted funds is reduced as well. So.
It's still complicated, like I said, I, because I, I, and I seen that, I'm like, oh, I need to clarify this, what, what happened here?
So you could, I mean, there are possibilities as far as, right now, we're transferring money from inheritance to roads and inheritance to general. We could reduce the transfer from inheritance to roads, increase that by the same amount that transfers from inheritance to general, and then increase the transfer from general to roads. Big circle, which would have no effect other than to allow you to exclude more capital improvements from the lid there by fixing the lid. I know.
Of course.
The legislatures over the years have compound this problem.
And, and I mean, Susan and I were talking in the hall, there is no way to really know where we are going to be next year to, to begin.
Yeah, because they're changing it all again.
I know, so.
Apparently this calculation then goes away, but it's replaced by something different, so.
Something different, right?
It did not have the impact that we were thinking that it was going to have.
You know, it just, it's just that it's.
No good deed goes left unpunished, as Kent would say.
But, you know, you can move the transfers around.
It's just a numbers game.
So we got to play, you have to play the smoke and mirrors just a little bit.
Yeah.
I do appreciate the email explanation because I like having it in writing.
That's why I printed that out too, so it's like.
Yes, I do appreciate it. I'll have to read it many times before it really sinks in.
Yeah, we can cut numbers here and do all that, but once she, until you actually put it in the lid calculation formula and move all that stuff around, it's, it's, there's, I don't, I mean, I'm thinking Susan, but there's multiple places she's got to move it around in the budget document, so. Thank goodness she does that part.
So what is next on our calendar? September fourth, deadline per city county community colleges, school districts to provide information to the county assessor electronically if property tax increased by more than the allowable growth percentage. Oh, there's a whole lot of things under September fourth.
Most of that has to do with joint public hearing.
Okay, county clerk will notify county assessor of joint public hearing details. County assessor will provide to county clerk a list of all political subdivisions. County clerk will notify each participating political subdivision of the date, time, location of the public hearing.
So even at eighteen two, we still have to cut probably a million bucks to stay.
I believe there was a.
Lid, correct?
No, you're three, well, the lid is three hundred and eleven.
Right.
Joint public hearing is the other one.
The nine hundred, the nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine.
And where is that number?
Right here in the email that Susan sent.
Is that this?
Yes. It's the very last number.
Yes.
Nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three, three hundred and ninety-nine.
Yeah, it could have changed a little after today, but it's about that.
About that.
Now, the tax levy did go down, like I said, a half cent on page five, I think it is, on Susan's handout she gave you. From last week, it went down a half cent.
Susan.
For what we did.
Okay.
Theoretically, we could, we could cut out potentially the nine hundred sixty-nine thousand and still have our lid be skewed to.
It, it would depend on how you do it. I mean, if you were to, if you reduce your tax request by that amount, but leave the transfer into roads. I mean, roads basically is going to need, unless you take the whole million dollars out of roads, which, you know. But if you were to leave roads alone.
You need to, you need to continue to face this way, you don't want to see their faces.
But if you were to reduce your tax askance by that million dollars, that would cure the lid problem too.
Okay.
Yeah. So if theoretically you were to transfer money from inheritance, part of the, you know, there was no transfer from inherit, or the, the transfer from inheritance to general didn't happen last year because it wasn't necessary.
Right.
And so the money is still sitting in inheritance. So that could be added to this year's transfer.
I thought we already transferred a bunch from inheritance.
Yeah.
It was a fraction of what we had anticipated.
Well, that's last year, but we started this year with transfers.
Over two million dollars.
Over two million dollars already.
And the transfer from, from inheritance to.
And we haven't physically done it in the budget, it's on paper.
It's still.
It's on paper. To the tune of two point three, two point four.
Two point four, yes.
Two point four. And that's not what we, that doesn't include what we didn't transfer last year?
No, that's, last year, the transfer from inheritance to general is about one point six million.
I think it was, yeah, one point six, because we don't transfer four without.
It's about one point six again this year.
Four hundred thousand.
But you didn't make that transfer last year, so that's.
Last year, we only transferred four hundred thousand of the one point six that we committed.
So what's in that, what's in that fund?
Six million something.
Yeah.
Only four hundred out of, only four hundred out of the one point six.
Six, yeah, six million in the inheritance fund.
And then we transferred the.
May I, may I ask a question?
Seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, we've done every year.
Yeah, that transfer to roads obviously.
So, so the reason we didn't do it is we said we're going to transfer one point six because we thought, I thought, we needed one point six to make the thing balance to work, to buy what we needed for our roads and do that. That was my understanding. So we only transferred four hundred thousand, and so where am I off? Why didn't, we need that amount of money?
Because people underspent their budgets.
Yeah. People underspend their budgets and so they, they didn't need the money to do what we did last year.
Hold on, okay, we underspend our budgets every year.
Every year.
And Jason knows that, we all know that, we know that we do that. And we know we get back in cash reserve a bunch every year, we know that. So I still don't understand why the, do we typically not use our inheritance that we budget over? What happened the year before and the year before and the year before, have we used them?
Okay, so yes, most years we have, not always, but we have, some years we have. You've got to remember, we estimate revenues. Some of those revenues are, we give it our best guess, sometimes they come in higher, so the cash balance over there is higher. So we don't have to transfer as much money.
Thank you.
Okay, does that maybe help?
Yes.
Okay, am I speaking out of terminal?
Yeah, yeah, that, and then you still have that money in inheritance to use if you need it, you know, it's.
So, so the revenues that we were talking about are non-tax revenues, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we estimated our non-tax revenues and we got more than what we thought.
Correct.
Thank you, that explains it.
In, in interest that Alex has invested.
I don't buy that for a second. We have interest every year since Susan's been here. We keep it in a separate pot now that says interest. We used to get interest too before. We always have our money invested, maybe we get more, not as much.
Getting more, that's.
I, I, I get it, yeah.
I was giving an example of the non-tax revenue.
Yeah, yeah, but we have a million from non-tax, I agree with that.
Yeah, so really, all that revenue that we figure is pretty much non-tax revenue.
Yeah.
I have a quick question. Are roads gentlemen stuck around today? Because at the end of last week's meeting, there was a lot of conversation that I couldn't fully address. Do they need to stay here or can they go to work?
They can go, but I, if we're going to do something on roads and stuff, if I were them, I'd go lunch for a little bit and stick around.
I don't think it's lunch that they're needing to go to, but are they going to, are we going to look at roads budget?
Well, today's the day that we have to figure out whether or not we're participating in the joint public hearing, so.
Rover meets the road, right?
Exactly.
So yes, the answer is yes, please stay.
And by calculations, if we don't want to participate in that, we've got to find nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Correct.
Not counting the twenty, the forty roughly thousand that we've cut out thus far.
Let's, let's start with this way. You know, whether we participated in or not, I'm going to be there.
Yes, Joe was going to run the meeting.
So, so my point is, let's not cut money because we don't want to participate in a joint.
I agree.
Because, Chris, that's what we've been saying for, for the public. So let's not say that, let's just say we need to cut it, not because we don't want to, we are before a joint public hearing, because that sends the wrong context to the public.
You're right, you're right.
So let's just say we need to cut it and go on.
The proper reason is, Ernie Goss just published a statement saying that rural Nebraska was already in a, in a recession. People are having to tighten their belts and county government should too.
I agree, I totally agree.
You're, you're right, the messaging verbiage.
Yeah, I don't care about the public thing, we need to do it because it's right, period.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, well, we got work to do, so.
Okay, may I start?
Please.
As much as I'd like to see more asphalting being done on the asphalt project that we approved, the bid came in six hundred thousand dollars less than what we anticipated.
Nope.
There's an easy six hundred thousand right there.
Okay, just a minute, capital outlay, that's part of the capital, that's part of the lid. If you cut that, that's not going to do anything to the lid, correct, or not much? That's, that's the problem.
It may not do anything to the three hundred eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy.
Correct, but it would.
Ten dollar lid, but it will do stuff for the property tax request that we're asking.
And I have to run that calculation through because we didn't exclude everything that was a capital improvement for roads because of the limitations. So you can reduce it some, but I don't have that detailed calculation in front of me, so.
So, so I'm slow, so say that again so that it really soaks in.
So.
It's a capital outlay project.
Oh, I get, I get the capital outlay, but that's.
And I think the capital outlay.
And I get that's outside of the lid, I get that.
But there is a limit what you can exclude.
Yeah, there's a limit to what you can exclude because there's only a certain amount going into roads that you could exclude from.
A certain percentage that you can exclude, you're saying.
And I, I don't know exactly.
That may skew that percentage, or might not, we might be able to take advantage of four hundred or three hundred.
Something like that and, and reduce that part, but I don't know that amount right now.
Thank you.
To bring that part.
And I, I wouldn't have known that, thank you.
Okay.
But that's specific again to the lid. We're wrestling with the property tax request and what we're asking the taxpayers of.
Yes.
Yeah, but that would also reduce property taxes because it would reduce.
So I, I'm in alignment with Jerry's thoughts on that.
As much as I'd like to utilize our good fortune in coming in under what we anticipated, six hundred thousand is six hundred thousand.
And we need to leave it, we need to leave it as a savings value, take advantage, I mean.
We weren't anticipating it, so we're not going to, and who does, who knows what next year when we, next budget year, when we try to finish that other segment, maybe the prices come in lower yet? Don't know. But a savings is a savings.
It's a good suggestion.
And then I would also suggest, maybe if that, if that's something that you want to do, just, if we need to reduce the money that goes into the road fund, maybe from inheritance instead of general? Because then that would have a positive effect on the lid.
So, so let's, let's just say, we, we, we take a million dollars from inheritance and put it into roads, an additional million dollars, okay? That is a million dollars less we need from the general, i.e. from our taxes. Correct? Okay. Now, having said that, we're stealing from Peter to pay Paul, we know that. But it does do what I think we are attempting to do to some degree or not.
It sounds like it helps out on the. It helps with the lid.
It wouldn't help with the lid to transfer the million from inheritance to roads. You have to transfer it from inheritance to general and general.
General, that's correct.
Is how you need to do it.
Yes.
The numbers game.
So eventually it would get into roads, but yeah, that's how you would have to do it.
And I'm not suggesting.
It seems like, it seems like the legislature's created a way for laundering money.
Yeah, it does.
Quite, quite honestly, it is a, it is a show.
How was this?
And, and I wasn't suggesting that.
Not that it's laundering, like, it's not actually laundering, it's just seeing. What was the amount that we actually saved on that road project?
Six hundred thousand roughly. Oh, I got right here.
Well, since we're picking on the road.
It wasn't quite a full six hundred thousand.
I'm going to circle back to the road, more or greater thing.
It's one million, six hundred, eight thousand, eight hundred and two.
I'm not in favor of that.
Adding the program this year, additional.
That needs to go away. And I've felt that from day one.
Five ninety-one, you had how much in your budget? Two, two. And this is one, six oh eight, eight oh two fifty.
Yes.
Hundred and ninety-eight, ninety-seven fifty cents.
So five hundred and ninety.
We're, we're going to round that to whole numbers, please.
Let's call it five hundred and ninety thousand.
And my apologies for attacking a savings that you had we could have utilized, but.
Now, we don't have much choice.
So that takes one million, six hundred and ten thousand.
It's a savings and it's an advantage and we're going to use, we need to use it.
And, and in all fairness. And, and in all fairness, we did have conversation about adding to that, you know, going a little farther with that project.
One ninety-seven fifty.
So, we took down five hundred and ninety thousand.
In the future, that's year, can we just plug in two point two again?
That's a good question, Brian.
Too much of increase. Because we've got other along the pieces.
What was the question?
How does this affect us next year? Can they plug that two point two back in?
Plug it in, I don't know if we'll have the money for it, I mean, we can ask for anything, but how it's going to affect it last year is if we cut our budget this year, which we should do, it's going to affect how we budget next year, because unless the legislature changes, and they probably will, they're looking at CPI and/or two, what is it, two, two and a half percent.
I think the C.
It was zero, or the state and local government index, whatever that is.
Yeah.
So, so, yes, yes, in fact, it will, and it will affect every budgeting agency, that's how come we were having conversations earlier that some counties are, that can, have actually even raised their budget playing that game for next year. That doesn't work for us. I mean, I shouldn't say that, doesn't work for me, but.
Okay, now, I want to make sure of something, last week, we approved using some RFA funds for a vehicle for their past and predator control group, which took out thirty thousand dollars that was budgeted. Did that get taken out?
Yes.
Yes, all those changes were made.
It's in the addendum, in the handoff.
Yes, all those changes from last week are down here.
Okay, those are, okay, just for the chair.
Yep, they are all done. For Susan, I've got her on speed dial. She's fantastic.
We do get our bang for our buck.
That's on the show.
Yeah.
Where is our Rhodes budget?
Page fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
Oh, no wonder I had to turn the page.
Yeah. I did the same thing, Joe.
They still left, so that'd still be a capital outlay project, and those are excluded, aren't they, from the, the legislature just passed?
Is he talking about next year?
Yeah.
No. The capital improvements, as I understand it, don't figure at all in the new calculation.
It's what? Capital improvements are what?
It's like law enforcement, public attorney, public defender, county attorney, it's really weird.
So, the new, the new calculation for next year.
Oh, the only ones that aren't are public safety and those.
Wands, public safety, but like, capital outlay, I don't believe, I don't believe either.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
So, this capital outlay part goes away?
Oh, my goodness.
So, it's just basically dollar for dollar increase in your tax, increase.
Wow. Oh, my goodness, I don't even know what that means. You can't even comprehend that right now.
And I don't think anybody knows what it means yet.
When we look at how much the capital outlay part has been excluded.
That's kind of scary.
Scary, it's, I can't put my hand around it.
It's kind of like the, the property tax authority page for the joint public hearing. It seems to me that it's going to look a little more like that, but they're going to make adjustments for safety, so jail, sheriff, public defender.
Yeah, but, but, if, if, if the capital outlay is no longer a part of that, look how much we spend in capital outlay people. It's huge.
But it's included in the total budget of eighteen million.
Well, what part did you say goes away, Susan?
Well, the lid calculation itself. It becomes a, a new calculation.
Exactly, so that was my, my question, was, we have the zero percent, or the state and local government index, whatever the acronym is.
And I think they said the average of that has been four pers, is it four percent?
It's like four, three percent.
Roughly, but the, there's exclusions to that, and that's what you're talking about as far as.
The safety.
Public safety, and the county attorney's office.
Yeah. And is Rhodes included in the public safety?
Rhodes, I think Rhodes, I think Rhodes is included in the whole calculation, but there are no exclusions, as I understand it, for capital improvement, so.
Like there is current.
Yeah, so, right, in, or interlocal agreements, or, but I don't know what they're going to do, somebody's going to take a close look at this and figure out what the consequences are going to be, and they may have some more legislature that corrects that, or takes that into account.
We're going to open it up in January.
Yeah.
See, yeah, because you take a look at what we've done with interlocal agreements, we've done that to save the taxpayers money.
Yeah. But you're limited on how many you can do of those, correct?
No. No.
Yeah, there is a limit, five, five cents or.
Five cents or something like that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's weird, because like I said, it's another.
On the levy part, actually.
Yeah, they did that on purpose. Okay, well, let's, let's make our time worthwhile, our guys right here. Ken, you had mentioned one type thing from last week was.
Well, motor grader program, I don't.
What line are we at here?
Is that?
Was that equipment that?
Maybe that's been modified anyway, but.
Motors, motor graders, okay.
What line item?
That is line item five, zero, three, zero, seven, page three of that.
So, I'm, I'm a bigger fan of buying a used machine than trying to buy new machines, and that wouldn't change if we had five million dollars in surplus, because to Jason and Brian's point, the deaf engines, and I, I understand this from other people I've talked to in the trucking business, that these power units have a lot of problems, but to me, we may as well be buying a used unit and, and keep the equipment repair line item there for the fifty thousand dollar engine, because the drivetrain essentially, to me, my opinion only, I don't do maintenance on motor graders, but to me, the heavy, the high dollar replacement expenses is typically the engine. The rest of it, if our guys are servicing them right, and I believe they are, they're built to a high standard, heavy duty, you don't get a lot of issues with the, the frame and wheel assemblies and the spindles, the big ticket item is the engine. So, as I say, I'm, I'm a bigger fan of sticking with buying used machines, and I get that they're harder to get a hold of, but I don't buy brand new vehicles for the same reason, because you drive it off a lot, it's, you know, you're, it's worth thirty percent less than you paid for it, and you get into this thing about trade-in value, you know, five, six years ago, we were only getting twenty-five thousand dollars for rotor, trade-in values for motor graders, well, you may as well run them to death, and sell them for salvage. And I don't know what our last go-around on trade-ins was, but, I don't know.
I, I have.
I'm not a fan of that.
I have a bit different perspective. I don't buy new vehicles at our place either, Kent, because I, I get what you're saying. But I think with being on the Rhodes Committee and having a lot more up-close and personal contact, I mean, if you, if you look at our repair, road equipment repair, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, then below that, road equipment repair labor, eighty-three thousand dollars. I, I do know that Jason and Brian put a lot of thought, and, and I was trained that sometimes being short-sighted is the way you have to operate, but this is a long-term plan that we do in small increments over a, Jason, seven, ten-year period, that takes those numbers down to zeros. And, and I know from other, other contacts I have at, at the road department.
Yeah.
So, we're on page fifty-nine, line two fourteen hundred and two fifteen hundred. So, that's over four hundred thousand dollars just in repairs.
You're telling me all those repairs are motor graders, no trucks, and no motor grader?
Well, and I guess we do have some information here.
Yeah, I, I asked Jason.
Come on up, guys, stay there, Susan, you're fine, we can just bring another chair, that's fine.
I'll just sit right there.
Thank you.
I asked Jason and Brian to bring some more data after a conversation with Commissioner Bruns, but just downtime. The motor graders are the one piece of equipment that our road department uses every single day. They don't use the water truck, they don't use the tractors and the lawn mowers, or the mowers, they don't use the, the new road grooms every day. But the motor graders are our vital piece of equipment that we count on day in and day out.
Correct.
Year-round. And the repair bills just blow my mind.
And the, the repair bill, so last year between our repairs and the labor associated with it, I think we spent four hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Jason, so I can catch up with you, you're, you're prepared ahead of me, okay? Let me go back and look at, I can't really tell, but I want to look at that repair line item, and I know it's not just, no, I know it's not motor graders, but I want to look at kind of a history, how that's building up, that, now I got caught up, please go ahead, thank you.
So, I think last year between the repair item and the item right below it, the labor associated with it, we spent four hundred and, was it four fifty, four fifty-five? Out of that item, a bulk of our repairs, our estimate is sixty percent of that is towards our motor grader fleet, so.
And who, who is doing that repair work?
Well, some of it's done in-house, but a lot of it's done outsourced as well.
I understand, but we don't even try to do stuff in-house, certain things we know, we never have, so, talk to me about the kind of things that historically we've always done in-house with our people that we can do, okay? What kinds of things are those on repairs on motor graders?
That we can do?
Yeah.
All the circle shims and.
Right, small items.
All the moving parts.
Right, so, but what, that was what my point, most of it is farming out, that was all, all I was trying to say.
So, you're estimating, sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean it.
That, in, in the past, that's what we've done, because we usually haven't tried to take the big stuff.
No, no.
Okay.
So, you're estimating based on the sixty percent of two hundred and seventy-two thousand roughly in late, in the equipment repair and the labor associated with that repair would go toward the motor graders?
Correct.
Say that, say that figure again, Chris.
Two hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and five dollars roughly.
And then, so what I put together is I put together pretty much our motor grader program, projecting it out for a fifteen-year period, just to have a good comparison and some good history of once we get to the inflection point where we really do start to show a lot of savings, out past that seven-year period. And the numbers I use for figuring repair savings are actually more conservative than the sixty percent. I use the fifty percent number to just make sure we're allowing for a little bit of a buffer there, and we're not being too aggressive with our figures. So, up at the top right, you can see those numbers up there, fifty percent of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four actual. And then, next to it is the repair savings that I projected based on if we run with three thousand hour used machines on a purchase, which I figured that at half of the savings of new machines, because looking at the projected hours, we'd probably only have about half of our fleet that would be under warranty during any given period, once we're in full swing of this program. So, you can see the budget year starting off, the first big green block is all the numbers relating to costs of the machines with the quantities in there per budget year. Then the next block is the first, the used three thousand hour machines, so that would be our cost per year.
And all your projections from twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-eight are using current value?
They're just using current values, because there's no way to really know projecting inflation and, and that type of thing going forward.
But if you have inflation going up on the equipment, you have inflation going up on the labor and the.
In theory, yes, everything should inflate up.
And you're buying better machines at two-thirds the cost, because that's what you're saying, you're buying a two- or three-year-old machine?
No.
No.
The thing that he's given us is new.
New, 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 zero-hour machines.
Versus three thousand.
That's the green, so then, you have the light, the light red shades.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, they're going to be, model year is going to be roughly two, three, or four years old.
I guess two or three when I looked at the cost, thank you.
Yeah. So, then, the, the next columns over there is the, the green is the repair savings on the new machines, so it's projecting that out, and then how that affects the machine cost as well. And then, of course, the used machines, and then the column on the right shows our difference in the budget effect each year relating to, I guess, the different, the difference between the two programs per year. So, I guess first thing to note, so, the quantity of machines, I think if you went with the used three thousand hour machine program, then we'd be looking to replace three every single year, just to be able to try to stay somewhat within where we'd want to be for hours. The new program, you, we would alternate.
Where do you want to be with the hours?
Well, ultimately, we'd like to be around the thirty-five hundred hour range on an average of our fleet.
So, you would like your fleet to be new, I mean.
The new fleet, because it, it makes the most sense to us as far as keeping everything under warranty, because if your average machine hours is around thirty-five hundred or so, then everything's going to be under warranty. But as you go down through here and you look, you can start to see, down on the bottom, far bottom right, is, is a box that shows the first seven years of the program, the difference between the cost of our program every year new would be six hundred and ninety-eight thousand. If we went with the used program, it would be five hundred and forty thousand. And that's on an average for those seven years. So, it'd be a difference of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand average per year to go from the used to the new. But then, the biggest thing that sticks out is you go down below, once we hit the seven-year mark and we have updated our fleet, and you go for the next eight years on the projection, you can see that the new price is actually lower than the used price by about a hundred thousand dollars per year, just based on the trade-in value rising and our repair savings once we get to that point.
So, basically, it takes the repair savings down to, because the equipment would be warranted.
Yeah.
It takes the repairs down to zero on motor graders.
So, once we get through that first seven-year cycle, then it would take the fifty percent we're figuring for the motor graders out of our budget, that would take that completely out.
So, it takes.
So, saying you always had a machine under warranty, you're saying all your machines are under warranty then?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, it takes fifteen years to realize the return on the investment. You have seven years of buying new equipment at an increase at, at a difference of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand roughly, and then, eight years after that, you're getting that ninety-seven thousand back in savings, but you still have to go that full eight years to recoup what you have spent in the additional money over.
Uh, yeah, I guess it depends on how you look at it, right? Because we would start to yearly be able to reduce the budget on this program.
Right, but it would take about eleven years to break even, eleven point two or eleven point three years is where you zero out, that's what it amounts to.
Yeah.
Yep.
I must have miscalculated, I, I was thinking it was fifteen to, to zero.
No, fifteen is a minus ninety-seven, isn't it?
Yes.
So, so somewhere up there, I think it's about eleven, two, it zeroes out, anyway, you're correct, and, and you're thinking it's a long term, yeah.
Are there other savings that we might realize by having the more modern equipment? Fuel efficiency, efficiency for your employees out on a job?
You'd have fuel efficiency that we didn't quantify, you'd have all the. You'd have fuel efficiency that we didn't quantify, you'd have all the, like the reporting aspects, the maintenance reminders and all the automation there.
The downtime should be.
Yep.
Way less.
Your downtime would be, yeah, greatly reduced.
I know we had a lot of road projects that were seriously delayed this summer because your construction motor grader was down waiting for parts and repairs. How about the counties around us, Jason? Can you speak to, are other counties using a program similar to what you've proposed?
There are quite a few counties around us that do a similar program, they buy the new machines, a lot of those actually only run them until about the five thousand hour mark, and then they get rid of them, that's why.
Is that always purchased then?
Uh, no, a lot of them are purchased, yeah.
I did reach out to a couple of counties, and I know Keith County's our purchase program. And, and the commissioner that I spoke to said, they've very, had very good results, and it's been a great budget decision for them.
Yeah, there's a lot of counties that are going that way if they're, if they have a, a very good-sized fleet, just because it's reducing their costs quite a bit.
So if, thanks for putting all that information together, but if, since your department is the redheaded stepchild.
The low-hanging fruit.
And we always, and we always pull from that department, it seems like. If you were asked to come up with some savings on your budget, do you have a spot that you could sacrifice?
Well, I guess what is, I guess we didn't hang around long enough last week, I think, to catch all the changes that were made, but what, what changes were made to the roads budget relating to what we were talking about earlier with the need for the counties?
We came up with three hundred thousand ARPA funds to help out on one machine, for a machine, for machine purchases.
Okay.
What else did we do?
That was the only, that was the only change.
And then we're talking about the six hundred for.
The asphalt.
The asphalt reduction.
That was not discussed last week, that was discussed today.
Yeah, but I mean, so if we're to that point, I mean, there's, I guess there's nine hundred thousand we pulled out of our budget, so.
No, no.
What else do we?
No, you didn't pull anything out of your budget, that was a bid.
We're penciling in three hundred thousand ARPA dollars.
What I'm saying is it reduced our budget number.
Oh, yeah, right, I see what you're saying.
Right, by six hundred thousand.
Gotcha, yeah.
And added the three hundred thousand from ARPA.
When you say pull out of your budget, it sounds like something you did, but it, didn't it, just your budget automatically got reduced because the bids were better?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to be short, but okay. Because we may have to pull out, and then, then it's gonna be tough, so.
So do, if there's a figure that we need the road department to reduce to, can the, can we come up with that figure and give them the authority of, of finding that reduction?
Well, that, that was nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars budgeted for motor grader purchases, I think, right?
Uh, it was nine ninety originally.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That number, I'm not, not a fan of, that's, that's what I'm driving at. And we said, what if we take three hundred thousand, but it still lingers in my mind if, this is kind of getting off topic on that line item, but the budget, to go back, comparing apples to apples, as Joe pointed out, you know, our incremental step up in our aggregate budget on roads has an anomaly we know of because we doubled up on two projects, but if you, if you move that number back to twenty-two, twenty-three, and then look at our step, it looks like maybe we are pretty hefty as far as increasing percentage-wise. But, but anyway, back to the motor grader thing, I'm, I'm still struggling with it, that's, I, I, I appreciate your chart too, but that's a long time for a payback, when you're trying to stay within budget. That's, I, the other thing that I keep going back to in my mind is, you know, we bought these road groomer things.
Yep.
Because they were supposed to cut down hours on motor graders. And I know you said, well, the, now we can do other things, but where did we come up with all the personnel to run road grooms and motor graders simultaneously? And you've essentially got the same crew you had, Brian, three, four, or five years ago. I'm, I'm a little lost on that.
Where, what was your question? How are we running?
The rationale for the road grooms was to cut hours on motor graders.
Yep.
A lot of the heavy lifting, essentially, yeah, you still do that, but maintenance, motor grader doesn't have to be on the road. Then I asked about that a while back, and the reply was, well, we've got those graders doing other things. What was that staff doing before we had road grooms to run and motor graders to operate at the same time? I'm a little confused about how the road groom is benefiting us as far as hours on motor graders, because that was the whole idea. Part of the rationale, if I remember right, correct me if I'm wrong, that was gonna elongate the life of our motor grader fleet, because we weren't putting as many hours on them each year.
Yeah, and the, we're not necessarily reducing the hours of our graders, we're allowing.
We were told that though, because we, we, we even talked about, that was part of that conversation.
And part of that conversation developed into the graders, the savings on use of graders on grading the roads, the graders were doing some other things as far as helping build up roads. But if that's the case, then we said we had one motor grader down that was used for construction of the roads and delayed our program a long time.
We have one six-wheel motor grader that is the primary road construction motor grader, that's the one that I was referencing, but there are many, many, when they're building a road, drive out there and take a look, there's many.
So there's, I think there's numerous, there's numerous things that are involved in that.
Yes.
Has it reduced the sheer number of hours that those machines spend on their specific route? Yes, it has, it has done that. There, it allows them to do a lot of other things too. One is aiding some of those operators, if their, their route's covered or the groom is hitting their route to cover what would take them a couple days to do, they're shifted over and utilized on the road construction crew. And, you know, we don't have a road construction crew with our current staff that's fully staffed with the people they need to run all the time. So we're constantly trying to pull and shift people where they're needed, keep people productive, and, and move things around in that manner, right? Another thing the road grooms do is they allow the blade operators to start working on some of the stuff that they normally wouldn't have the time to do, like pulling the ditches or, you know, things like that, that most of the time they'd be just running the route trying to get done, so.
And who's running the groom?
Well, I think that's a big, a big thing we're missing too, since we got the grooms. Mowing this year has been terrible. We haven't took the mowers off hardly at all. A lot of times right now, you can mow the ditches the last time for the fall and be done, and that's not the case this year. We mow them, and two weeks later, we're getting phone calls.
We're not gonna complain about the rain that has created that situation for you.
God bless the rain, but we have been mowing and mowing and mowing. And our mower guys' plan was they could unhook from the mowers and hook the grooms on, utilize the same tractor, and that just hasn't been the case at all.
Okay, all right. I understand that.
Did that answer that, Kent?
I have to be devil's advocate. I have to be devil's advocate.
No, no, I mean, did that, did that answer your question, no?
I think so. I, I understand that, we, but, you know, when we, this board evolved into five, we got a lot more aggressive about pulling ditches and stuff back then. So to your point, yeah, I get it that, you know, time is, is the number-one precious commodity, you'll have so many hours to do everything, but they, they weren't pulling ditches religiously like they had decades prior. I've lived in rural county for forty-five years, and I can tell you that it was a lot, there's a lot of catching up to do.
I don't disagree with that. That's what we're trying to get accomplished, I guess.
We were getting a lot more action, so to speak, out of the same amount of crew, even then, before we had all these other pieces of equipment. And we bought a D-six dozer two years ago to help with that road construction project. I guess that's gonna be a big help, I think, right?
Yeah, it has its place.
It's not like we haven't spent some money on equipment, but, you know, we're no longer flush of cash, and the ARPA Christmas tree is out of presents. So, I, I really do appreciate this, but candidly, I don't see the value in it as far as having a million-dollar annual budget to buy motor graders. That's just my opinion, only one person.
Well, and it wouldn't be annual, it'd be on a rotation of the three and the two, right? So on the, every other year, when you're on the two new, it would be almost identical to the same as running a three used.
Jason, are, are, is this, is this an increase in motor graders, your new program from what we have been?
The quantity?
No.
No. No, we have eighteen route machines, and this program's based on the eighteen route machines.
And we've always bought three and two, is that what you're telling me?
Last year.
I don't think so.
No, no, we haven't.
Last year we bought none.
That, that, that's what I was asking, Jason. I was saying, is this an increase on your annual program that you used to have? And I think it is, the three and two, yes it is.
Two are, well, we, we haven't had a program.
That's my, that's my point. So what we're doing is we're taking in a year when we're tight, and we're increasing, that's all I'm trying to say. The answer to that is yes, because we haven't had a program, but we've not purchased that number of new machines in the past, period. We haven't done it in the past.
I'm gonna throw something out there, and this is not necessarily a pro or against, but I don't know that your three in one year, two in the next, three in one year, two in the next is gonna work. If we have what the legislature's proposing, where we can only increase our, our budget by zero or on average four percent, the first time you go down to that two, you're not gonna be able to go back up to that three.
Well, and as far as the, our total acquisitions, though, year by year, we were gonna use that off-year every year if we needed to replace any other miscellaneous equipment, whether it be trucks or whatever else, you know? So I don't know that our overall budget would be reduced that much, just our motor grader portion.
Will it be about, will it be the same, you think, from budget?
From year to year? I think it would stay pretty consistent, yeah.
The same, stay, stay flat?
Our overall budget? Yeah. Well, I don't know about flat, but it would be pretty.
Well, that's, that's the question, because that's our discussion.
It would not have huge spikes up and down.
No, I'm not saying huge spikes, I'm talking about what the legislature's doing. Now's the time, we gotta be thinking about it for next year and the year after. And right now, what we're looking at is, I don't even know the terminology, but I thought it was less than four, actually, I thought it was three-point-two or something like that.
Yeah, I thought it was four.
But, but we don't have a lot of, of growth that we're getting year, it's gonna get worse with the legislature, we're not gonna have the dollars, so I don't, once we take this program up here, I'm, I'm just wondering how we're gonna maintain it. That's all.
So help me understand, Jason, I'm looking at the, the final column on the far right-hand side.
Uh-huh.
There, there are small savings realized after the first year, right? Twenty-twenty-five, there's a small savings of like twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Yeah, and I, that is, that column is just the effect of the difference between both the programs for that budget year.
For that budget year.
So, like I said, the first year is the, the worst year, of course, because, you know, we're saying it would cost us three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars more to buy three new machines versus three used machines. Then the following year, when we drop down to two new versus three used, then we would actually be about a zero difference. And then the following year, we'd be three hundred thousand more, but then the following year, we'd actually start to see some savings in that year because of starting to get repair savings coming in on the new fleet.
Right, then two-seventy-eight more, minus forty-eight, two-forty-seven more, minus two-twenty-seven, so.
Yeah. So let me ask, is it, is it this, is it the program that you're opposed to? Or is it the bottom?
Who are you asking all this?
I'm asking all of us.
I'm opposed to raising any more money, period. That's what I'm opposed to.
But, no, my, my question a few questions ago was, if we have a dollar amount that we want them to trim out, can we give them the authority to decide where those trims are? It seems like every time we talk about cutting a budget, we always go after the motor graders, because they are expensive. But is that, is that a conversation we can have, and a place we can go to?
I, I, here, I'll speak for myself. First of all, I think we need to decide, as a board, are we gonna authorize buying new motor graders and continuing a program or starting a program? That's one discussion. The second discussion is, will, will we let them find the savings in the budget? I'm willing to let them find the savings in the budget, it's their budget, you know? But I think the motor grader program, because it's a program that we're initiating, is something this board needs to decide whether we want to do it or not. And I'm not sure there's total agreement that we do want to do it. I think there's two different questions. Now, if I, if I might have said it wrong or feel wrong, but that's my feeling. So I think there are two different issues.
There are two different issues, because we implement a program, that's a commitment for a long-term.
With money you don't know if you're gonna get next year, or can't raise, after the legislature's muddied the water. You know, you, you're not, we're not picking on the road department budget, because the reality is, most of the budgets are personnel, just like a big chunk of yours is personnel, and we always look after our personnel, right? This board gave a cull raise, gave merit raises, we try to look out for our staff, and that's the right way to do it. But the bottom line is, on the business side of it, we have to figure out whether there is things that we can spend less money on. And of course, we're gonna look at this, because it's a big ticket item, of course we are. It's not personal, it's a budget thing.
Yep.
I was here on that side of the desk about thirty-five years ago, had a little teeny-tiny budget. And the three board commission came, and they picked apart everybody's budget, because they didn't have the money to buy anything.
And we really didn't.
They didn't, they couldn't buy a motor grader. I remember that vividly, and it's not fun. You get in those kind of budget cycles, it's really not fun, not at all. They weren't even buying, they weren't even considering buying Caterpillar or John Deere motor graders, they were buying, what was it, Galleon?
Galleon.
Because they were cheap.
Couple years we had Champion.
And there were reasons they were cheap. It wasn't because they were a great value.
Three years.
And, and, and the board, hard to meet taking this chair, didn't do much with resurfacing asphalt roads. I think it was in twenty-nineteen, we had a five-million-dollar bond issued, five million to catch up. And that five million was paid by our taxpayers, because we deferred things.
To catch up. What, what I like about this, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the budget, and I see on page fifty-nine, the three hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we spent just on repairs, and the eighty-three thousand dollars that we spent just on labor. You take one of those line items, and that translates to the three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So, yeah, it's, it's not gonna happen immediately, this isn't an overnight fix. But down the road. But down the road, it pays off in, in serious dividends, and I, I like the thought that you put into that. I get that, you know, we have to think on the short term sometimes, but.
I just, couple questions with your lower little box here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That's the difference, the difference, um, that's average, and that's relatively the same for each of the first seven years, that hundred and fifty-eight.
That's the average for the first seven years, the average difference.
The average.
The far right column you can see on the side there is the true difference per budget year, so that's why it's an average of, in, in rough round numbers, it's an average of a hundred and fifty thousand a year. With one year being three hundred thousand more, the next year being zero, more or less, depending on where you're at in the three and the two cycle.
So, 'cause if I calculate this out, over seven years, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And then you hit the inflection point.
Mm-hmm.
And then the difference goes negative, right? To, to ninety-seven thousand to the benefit of the county buying new. And I, I would point out, this is the difference between one of two programs, not what we have right now, but one of, adopting one of two programs.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
We're, we're either adopting a program where we're buying three used blades each year, or we're buying three and then two and then three and then two new blades a year.
Yes.
Based on this.
Yes.
Which is not what we have right now. I calculate out the math, after the inflection point, it takes eleven years after that seven-year mark to hit our break even, using your average. Am I wrong in that math?
Um, I don't think you're figuring in any of the repair savings in there. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, no, you're, no, that, that's probably correct.
Yeah, it is correct.
'Cause the.
So we're looking at eighteen years before we break even on, on this program.
No, it wouldn't be eighteen, I don't believe.
Seven years is the inflection point, then the county starts saving money, and it's eleven years after that inflection point, on average, to hit our break even. From what we had in, in additional costs between the two programs over the first seven years.
Well, it's not like we're buying junk today, we're buying good, good machines, right?
Um, yeah, I mean, we've been currently, I guess the last couple we've bought have been, what, five to six thousand hour machines?
Well, I'm just saying. Well, tell me honestly, we up, we upgraded our fleet every time we bought a motor grader in the last three or four budget cycles, so you, Brian, you've been here for fifteen budget cycles. Is that an honest, fair statement to say? We got better?
We've gotten way better.
Better equipment. So, the, the, the big scary thing in this, and beating a dead horse, but the legislature has hogged this mirror so badly, we don't know how to, how this is gonna work moving forward. And our, you know, our personnel expenses go up every year, as you might imagine, and we have to take care of that need first in every department. Roads, jail, sheriff's office, on down the line, everybody in this building beyond. And then we work backwards from there. Because those expenses, you guys know this.
It's a matter.
We understand it. Those expenses have to be met first, right? There's not a whole lot of way for you to function, what you do with eighteen machines or with twelve people. And so, reduction in force really isn't, you know, in the private sector, reduction in force typically is what we end up doing. But we, we're not, you know, we can't function, it's not like we got a lot of surplus, right?
Yep.
So manpower's our greatest asset. Our employee base is our greatest asset there. So you always have to work backwards, 'cause, you know, next year, I'll guarantee you that personnel expenses are gonna go up two, three, five percent. Not 'cause anything you did wrong, but the insurance carriers are getting fewer and far between, the mods don't come out right, so we're gonna raise our insurance rates, et cetera, et cetera. It's just, it's just a reality, so. That's why I'm very cautious, especially with all the unknowns, with how this budgeting constraints is gonna work, how it's gonna function in twenty-four, five, six. Going full hog on this and going into a new purchase, new purchase program and putting this much in this line, I, I, I just don't know what's gonna happen.
Well, and this, I guess for a little bit of comparison, looking back through some of the previous budgets too, back when the program, I guess the, the blade fleet as a whole was in pretty poor shape. And the effort was made to upgrade it, which did make huge, huge gains in it. There was a couple of years back to back where I think it was budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand in this line item for three used machines. So, back then, I don't, I didn't do the math to go through a percentage based on overall budget and everything else, but with inflation and everything else, where those machines are now, you know, we're projecting, uh, the used machines at six hundred and thirty thousand for that item compared to the four fifty back then, right? So, I mean, it's not a whole lot of difference from what we've done in the past, those couple of years compared to the used this year, right?
What, what are we paying for new mach, used machines with six, seven thousand hours?
Six, seven thousand hours?
Five thousand hours.
Um.
You know, because when you stop and think about number of hours, that's, that's really only a three or four-year-old machine, if you're getting it from somebody that's using it, not a, not, not a, a, a construction company, for example, because they, they use the machines totally different. You know, depending on if you road work, you're up ripping, you might have a machine sitting for two or three months, but when he works, he might do five years' worth of damage to that machine, you know, depending on where you're working at. So, I'm just curious how many hours we're on the machines we've been buying and how much have we paid for the used ones, the last ones?
I think the last machine we bought was around, do you remember what that one was?
Yeah.
With the trade?
In twenty-two, twenty-three, a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred dollars was a national expense for motor graders. Yeah, it was twenty-one, twenty-two.
So that one was around a hundred and fifty, I think, for that one. I think that was a six thousand hour machine.
Yeah, but so, okay, but we are looking at trades, that's what you looked on your other ones too, so I'm still looking at that, so was what, Jerry, one-ten or something?
One oh-eight, five hundred.
Okay.
In twenty-one, twenty-two, it was four hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Must have bought three.
We bought three that year.
Three.
Yeah, and really even looking back to that data there, that year when I think we spent four hundred and forty-four thousand, I think you could buy a new machine for roughly two hundred and fifty thousand back then. So, those have gotten dramatically more expensive since that time, so it's really hard to compare that number. Like I said, that number would equate to about the six hundred and thirty thousand today.
Okay, so, uh, not to detract, but to kinda make some progress here. How many machines do you think your department needs to buy this year, whether they're new, used, or given to you, how many do you need?
Well, I guess we'd like to start with three.
No, no. You need three. Okay, that's the answer, because I'd like to start with a raise on my job of a hundred and fifty thousand, but I can't. So you need three machines this year?
Yes.
We bought zero last year.
Not how many you would like, you say, well, I think we'd like to start with three, so.
Need versus want.
So you need three machines this year?
Yes, we need three.
Thank you.
We need three to start whatever program we're gonna go with.
Okay, if the. If we start a program, thank you, go ahead.
Yeah.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, you got the floor.
I was just repeating what he said, he said if we start a program. Okay, that's all I, that's all I wanted to say, please continue, I asked. Oh, you did ask it, okay. Thank you, I, I, too much time talking, not enough for this, thank you.
Well, I think regardless of whether anyone thinks we need to adopt one of the programs, I mean, we're, we're just trying to look at our management of our equipment fleet going forward. So, I mean, I understand budget years change, everything's gonna change, right? The unknown, we don't know. So, we have to start somewhere, right? We have to have some kind of a plan that we're looking at for the future of how do we manage this fleet and do it as efficiently as we can and not just this year, next year? You know, we're trying to look ahead fifteen years into the future, what can we do? So, will that be set in stone every year? Well, no, we, we don't know what it's gonna bring, right? We're just trying to get a plan together to look ahead, so.
All, all plans are designed to be changed and flexible and, but as you said, a plan has to start somewhere.
Yeah.
And I would just like to remind everybody that we selected Jason and Brian for these jobs because of the decision-making and hi, and the experience that they bring to, to running a road department. And so, I, I appreciate all the work that you've put into this. I appreciate you looking short-term, mid-term, long-term, and having a plan that, um, in, even in the midterm, I like reducing all of the downtime, the repairs, the la, the labor. And just looking around us and seeing the other counties and the other county commissioners that have realized the value of doing a program like this. We have real people using this program right around us. There, there's a lot of sensible reason for us to seriously consider. I, I support your plan.
Okay, I'm gonna be myself. Uh, we selected those gentlemen for that, and the voters out there selected each one of us around the table to do what we're doing, and that's manage the budget and take care of the tax dollars. We've heard from them, they did their job, okay? They presented it to us, now let's do our job. So I'm gonna ask that we first of all decide amongst this board, or, or is this board, it's gonna be a straw vote, it's not gonna mean anything, do we support going with a three and two new year program? Because that's, that's a place to start.
It's a place to start.
Okay, and I'm gonna say I don't support that. That's a straw poll, speak your, speak your voice.
I've, I've already spoken.
Okay, you support it. Jerry, four. Okay, you're four. Chris?
I'm, I'm for a program, I just don't know which one yet. I really wanna needle out the, the break even on the program.
I can't?
I can't support the new process.
Okay, so that's two, two and a, two and a middleman, so let's keep the discussion going then.
Very good, I would just like to point out that I lost my thought. We've been here a long time. It'll come back to me.
Can wait, babe.
Could I, could I, could I ask, ask a question?
Please.
We need to trim nine hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars and change. We came up with five hundred and ninety-one thousand and change from the savings on asphalt budget, is that correct? Am I correct?
Nine hundred, five hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
We're gonna round that to five hundred and ninety thousand.
So the difference is... We need to come up with three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars more, is, am I correct?
What about using ARPA?
We already, we've already, we've seen the mix, we've got ARPA that we've given you already.
So we still need three hundred and, how many?
Three seventy-eight.
But we, do we need it all from the road department?
Now, we haven't, we haven't subtracted what we've already cut this morning.
Right, that was like forty-some thousand?
Well, I gotta, gotta do the math.
Okay, Becky has something to say.
Yeah. Susan and I have talked a little bit. But these are rough numbers, now you're gonna understand, she's got to run through all the calculations, so these may vary by someone. I'm, I got six hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred is what we've basically cut this morning. How that's gonna affect the lit, the.
How much?
Six hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred total.
And that includes the five ninety-one from the asphalt?
And all the other, all the other budgets we've looked at.
Can I get that number one more time?
I came up with six hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred.
So the nine, so.
So we have three hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight left.
Say that number again.
Three hundred and thirty-five thousand, six ninety-eight for the joint public hearing number, roughly.
So the nine sixty-nine, three ninety-nine.
Is now.
That number reflected putting three hundred thousand ARPA funds into the motor grader purchase.
We did that last week, yes.
I'm just making sure everybody understands that.
Yep.
So. What if you bought two this year and three next year, instead of three and two?
I was just kinda thinking that too. I don't understand what's going on in, in legislation.
I, I don't either.
No, we don't either, Brian.
That's, that's part of our dilemma.
But it's really clouding our planning.
But does that get us, get a program kicked off and allow us to revisit it next year and see if it's even?
That's the sixty-four dollar question, we don't know, right, Joe? I mean, that was your point, we don't know where it's gonna be. But all I'm saying is, okay, so the, assuming you did say, alright, we're gonna buy two motor graders, and we're gonna help you out with the last of the, literally the last of the ARPA money. We'll kick that in there to that line item, and so we buy two brand-new ones.
Brand-new ones.
We go buy two brand-new ones. And then we go to the three next year, if, if it budgets, if it doesn't, I don't know, I'm just, it's just another idea.
I, I think, for me, where we requested no equipment be acquired last year for you guys, we've already put you behind the, the plan, behind the curve. And so that's why I supported starting with the three, because we do have the ARPA money to roll in there.
We bought a wheel loader.
If we, we didn't buy any motor graders, and the wheel loader, I don't think was last year, that was the year before, we bought a tr, a mower last year. But. I mean, I keep losing my train of thought when I'm interrupted. If, if, if there are other budget cuts that can be made and leave that three motor grader plan in place, are there, are there areas you think you can take a look at?
I think this is important enough to, to us, I know to myself, I don't know if Brian feels the same way, but I think we would like to revisit the rest of our budget and see what cuts we could make elsewhere if we're still needing to do that and leave this in place for this year.
Don't we need to know today? So when we say revisit, we, we mean revisit in the next five minutes, that's why we're staying here late, the lunch hour.
That's a lot of.
It's not a matter, it's not a matter of we have time.
It is, it's three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. About the price for a grader.
Have we brought every department before us? Are they the last place for us to look for budget cuts? There's nowhere else to go?
I don't know that we've brought everybody.
Sheriff's department gets new pickups, they decrease in value the minute they drive them off the lot.
What does that, what do we do if we do two this year?
I mean, we had many, many departments come in before us and not one request was made to, to look at their budgets. The, the people that came in the first part of Au, August. And Chris, after every, after every conversation, you would say, I reserve the right to call you back again, but we haven't. So, does that mean there is no other departments to look at? Because I know a majority of the phone calls I get, a majority of the complaints I get are all addressing the condition of the county roads. But I also feel like they're always the department that we go to, to, to look for the big cuts. So I feel like. So I feel like we need to spread it around a little bit.
I'm not disagreeing.
But I know we're on a time limit, so more, more, we probably should have had our magnifying glasses out and making those requests a lot sooner.
See, but that's, that's the issue, right, is we, we're on a time crunch for this stupid joint public hearing right now when we still have budget workshops that we have and we don't have a public hearing until, what day did we set?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third of this month? So.
Yeah, I'll remind you that the servicing is going to have to go through the lit calculation for capital outlay, so that may not be dollar-for-dollar either.
Okay. I mean, for me, I'm with Joe. Avoiding the public hearing just for the sake of avoiding the public hearing isn't a goal for me. It's providing services. We're, we're in an inflationary environment. We've been in an inflationary environment and our, you know, we've been ultra-conservative, I feel. But we're going to end up back in that area if we keep honing in and focusing on the road department for the cuts. We're going to be back to addressing a bond issue down the road like Commissioner Woodruff spoke to earlier. I don't want to put us there either, so.
Could I ask a question of the road department? Capital outlay, five days, zero three, zero two, pickups, twenty-four budget year. Do you, you got two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars there?
Yep.
Do you need those new pickups this year?
Uh, yeah, we, we really do need them.
Whatever, what, what's, where would it go or what's it used for? I mean, that's a lot, how many pickups is that?
So there's a total of four in there. There's two of them we have in there that are half-ton long-bed pickups with lift gates on them for remote areas to replace two of the ones that are about to give up. There's a, another item in, or one of the other trucks in there is a sign truck. So it's a, a truck with a utility box that we can outfit with all the sign materials and everything in them that's ready to, I guess, respond to any sign calls and be used for that.
But I mean, what, what year is that pickup now?
The one now?
Yeah.
Uh, it's a two thousand and ten.
Miles?
With two hundred and fifty thousand miles on it, I think.
Do you still guess?
Yes.
Becky, because we have a cost, if we, if we have to give notice to that the county is participating in the joint public hearing, what ballpark is that amount?
It's split between all the people that participate, right?
You just don't know who's going to be on there.
Right, yeah.
Tell you what, last year's was a little bit.
Because last year, we had to give notice that we were participating, but then we cut to a point where we didn't have to participate. There was a lot of confusion there, which I would, would like to mitigate, but.
Well, keep.
About eight thousand last year.
The county's expense. Jerry, on the pickups you were talking about, I'm looking back at sort of a history on, you know, I've seen one twenty-five. I see we budgeted one fifty-two last year. But what were our actual expenses? I see twenty-three. We had one seventeen. We spent two sixty-nine, so we must have bought more pickups than we planned last year.
We had the one year that we ordered the pickups that ended up getting delayed long enough. They rolled over into the next year, so we actually had the one year where we paid for four or less both years.
The same thing happened to the sheriff's department, you know.
Gotcha, alright.
The COVID catch-up year.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I'm, uh, you know, I, I just, I would hope that, um, Chairman, I'm going to step out and make one quick call.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please do.
Can we break for thirty to forty minutes?
Yes.
Get some food, allow you guys to kind of go through your budget. Our minds, I think all of our minds collectively are kind of shocked right this second we didn't mental break. I want to get to a point where I would like to not have to spend eight thousand dollars in taxpayer money on a goof-up because we can't get our stuff together.
Is the Illinois Board meeting here too?
No, it's, it's not this week.
Okay, that was my question.
Then I think that's a, that's a good idea.
Mr. Chairman, can I offer up a suggestion that will kind of help solve this dilemma, give you guys more time to look at it, kind of take care of everything? Susan and I discussed it briefly. There's the miscellaneous budget. I think there are at least one line item there that does fluctuate. It can fluctuate greatly from year to year. But I think we can use that for right now to get to where we need to be. And that will give everybody more time to think what you need.
I need a page. I got to look at it.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-five, actually.
Oh, fifty-five.
Fifty-four, fifty-five. The two-dash-ninety-nine-hundred miscellaneous line item, it went from two hundred and twenty-five that we had, we did almost three hundred thousand out of it. And then it, we had to, we were able to increase it, so we did to four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty-three thousand. The last couple of years, we have not had to spend out of that.
And what is that used for, Becky?
Whenever we have a, we don't know where to take it.
Which line are you talking about?
Two-dash-ninety-nine-hundred on page fifty-five.
The very last line, well, second to the last line, the four hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes. As you can see, the last two years, we haven't needed that two hundred and eighty-seven thousand was one year. We've had, we have years we spent more out of that. The bottom line, we do have some flexibility in this budget. Now, one thing I will say is sometimes the departments come and say, oh, I didn't plan on this. I need this. I want it, whatever. And guess what it comes out of? So that, we haven't had as much lately, but there for a while. It's like, well, I don't want this to come out of my budget. Well, if it's for your department, if you decrease that line item, it's probably going to have to come out of your budget.
So is that also, um, something?
Not that you can't go back and address others, but.
Something that the inheritance tax fund is there for, for emergencies like that also?
It could be.
So if we use this, we're not high and dry?
No.
But, but.
No, probably not.
But what it does is it gives us time to have conversations with the other department heads and really needle this motor grader program out a little bit more. And if we need to add money back into that because we made cuts elsewhere, we can do that. But for today's purposes of giving notice and not wasting eight thousand dollars roughly on notice, it puts us in a good spot.
I, I can support that.
So would we transfer out three hundred and eighty thousand dollars then in?
Well, like I said, she's got to run all this through the government and all that, so that's going to give Susan time too. We can't just expect her to have these figures. She's got to run them through multiple parts, so.
So it's our understanding then that we are going to, when do you need to give notice, Becky?
I have to give notice this, that's for tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So Susan will have to do the stuff today, so we can.
Okay, so it's my understanding that based on our cuts today and working with the clerk and our accountant, that we will have those numbers and whether or not we need to participate in that joint public hearing or not will kind of depend on that. The intent is not to participate if possible.
With still, and I, I want to put my intent out there. I still want to have every department in here. And those that I have questions on, now that we know, because we had some people in here for work sessions, very early before we knew what we needed to be trimming.
So we'll, so we'll continue our budget work sessions next week? We, we know that then the intent probably would be to try to replenish as much of that three seventy-eight back into the miscellaneous fund as possible. Our budget meetings, is that correct?
That's my intent.
That, that is my suggestion.
I appreciate that information. Thank you, ladies, for putting your heads together and coming up with that.
Anything else? Anyone want to add this late hour?
Do you have specific departments you want to see them through?
Uh, too early to tell.
Well, I don't know if it's too early or not. Should we just start the list over just because we didn't take anything out from the list? That's a question for this board.
Did we run through the entire list already?
Yes.
I don't.
I thought we had.
No, we haven't.
Oh, we have?
We have not, yeah. I don't remember seeing.
The ones that are left are, that are small budgets that.
There's nothing to trim, yeah. Like Lois in registered deeds. There's really no fat ever. I mean, we can, we can look at it.
I do twenty-seven of these budgets, stuff that's employee payroll and things like that.
Okay.
Is there a suggestion as to what agencies we would like to have back next week from this board?
In the here and now, I mean, can we take a look and, or does that need to be decided right now?
It's a full board decision, yes.
I would, I would defer to the chairman.
Yes. There we go.
Knowing that he'll probably have some input via email.
The chairman is going to receive input from this board if they so choose to, to give to Tammy. Otherwise, I'm going to start with three departments that are larger departments. We might be able to get a significant cut out rather than asking somebody with a really small department that's already been here that there's not much money to cut from, if that's okay.
I, I support that.
So, there you are.
I would presume one of those departments would be the county attorney's office.
Oh, no.
Let me say larger.
And how about the public defender's office?
I only say that because my boss has been here. I don't think he's going to be back next month.
Does that mean you have to be the one to fill her shoes?
You don't want this, no.
Now, we know that supposedly right now, those are outside the preview for next year, so.
Oh, that is right. You did address that earlier, so.
I would probably go there with law enforcement, at least now.
So not, not the sheriff either? Or other big?
We're not, we're not next year. We're here and now.
And we're talking about budgets for now, so, yeah.
Because if we're dealing with the rules of just now, then Rhodes, you're coming back and you're the only one coming back, so.
So on the call, you just see the sheriff.
Sounds good for us, huh?
That's where you started. Sheriff, Rose, and veterans.
We started with Sheriff, Rhodes, and budgets.
Building and grounds, weeds, and probation.
Then I would ask that we have the sheriff on.
Building and ground?
And who was, who was he on the other?
Okay, so you've seen the sheriff, Rose, veterans. The next week, it was building and grounds, weeds, and probation.
Okay, now veterans, next week is what?
No, I'm just saying who you've seen.
We've seen them or any?
Yeah, it's Sheriff, Rose, veterans, building and grounds, weeds, and probation. County court, district court, district court, defender, and then emergency.
I mean, I've gone through the list and I have things marked that I have questions on.
Yeah, I was going to say we've seen them.
Virtually everybody, so however you want to.
They've been in here, but there was no cuts requested.
Heard their support for their budget. We didn't make them defend, so.
I'm going to, uh, we've, we've got a couple of good ones to start out with. I'll be working on this. I'll be asking some help from my commissioners and we'll, we'll get it worked out by next week.
Sounds good.
Anything else to come before the board?
Who's coming in?
I don't know yet.
Sheriff's coming in.
Sheriff, building and ground?
He doesn't, he just said he didn't know yet. He's going to get more input and get it figured out.
Anything else to come before?